Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, October 25th, 2017, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is called to order. This meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV. It is also being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording this meeting. In addition, if you're viewing this as a recording, please note that at 7:30, we will move into a joint meeting with our select board. If there is any school committee business that we have not finished, we will finish that after the joint meeting with the select board. Pledge of Allegiance, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Melanie, do you want to read the correspondence?
Yes, we have one correspondence, an emailed letter dated October 4, 2017, from Mr. Donald Jarvis at the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Education Center regarding the Student of the Month for September 2017. Long Meadow student honored is Austin Munson for Graphic Communications 1.
Great. And let's move into the approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes for the September 27th, 2017, school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? opposed? And visitor comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to school committee announcements and recognition. And we have no business with guests tonight, so we'll move on to our administrative reports. Dr. O'Shea?
Sure. So there's a copy of your report, my report with you. Wanted to touch on the Williams Middle School principal search. As folks are aware, Larry Birdie has graciously agreed to serve as our interim principal, and he's a great person to have there during this transitional phase. He certainly has great experience and is offering a steady hand when we need it. So we have, a screening committee was put together, and I want to thank Michelle for representing the school committee on that screening committee, and Sue for leading that screening committee. It was a representative group, and they conducted interviews earlier this week, and actually we have identified two finalists for the position. The names I'll have to announce to the community tomorrow, but what we expect is that we will invite the candidates to visit us here in Long Meadow and give the staff and the students a chance to meet the candidate, and then, as we have done in the past, we'd have a session in the evening where parents could meet and greet the candidate and ask some questions, and also they'd have a chance to provide us some written formal feedback. So we're expecting to do that early next week. We'll put that information out to the community in an email, but we're excited that we had a good applicant pool, which sometimes doesn't happen when you post sort of mid-year, but we had a good applicant pool, and we're excited that we have two high-quality finalists identified. And again, we'll let those names, we'll release those names tomorrow. We're just not quite ready to do that yet. I also wanted to note, I had an opportunity on October 20th, this past Friday, to attend an educator sexual misconduct conference with Stephanie Jasmine and another community member who has done a lot of work in this area. And so it was a great conference, and you know, we attended, not in response to any particular issue that we're dealing with, but really as a way to be proactive in this area. And as you can imagine, Stephanie has come away with some great ideas on how we could use what we learned at the conference to inform our policy and practice going forward. So I think hopefully that will be the case, and it'll be some work for the policy subcommittee. But it was a rich conference. It was really, it was a national conference, and the experts that they had, the researchers, the practitioners that were at the conference were fantastic. MCAS, I know that Sue has some information for you in her report, so I won't go too deep into that, but we have the results, and we expect to mail the results home on October 31st, and Sue can talk to you a little bit more about our students' experience with that Next Generation MCAS at grades three through eight. We have the Mass Association of School Committees Conference at the end of next week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I was asked to serve as a panelist on Thursday morning for a session on the MSBA application and construction process, so I'm looking forward to that. We have sort of great international flavor these days in Long Meadow Public Schools. Glenbrook and Williams are hosting two teachers from the Netherlands through October 27th, and the teachers come to us through a partnership between the Fulbright Program, Scholars Program, the Dutch Ministry of Education, and there's an institute for training and development up in Amherst that also facilitated this. So we're actually having a lunch with them on Thursday, and so if any tomorrow, thank you. If any school committee members would like to join us, feel free. Looking forward to that. And the delegation that comes to us annually from Takikawa, Japan, is with us as well. So we have a visiting teacher and two students who are going to be making their way, who are making their way around the district these days. So we're excited to welcome and host them as well. And then, Special Programs Committee launched last night with John O'Sullivan, and from the Changing the Game Project, he spoke to about 400 student athletes in the afternoon, immediately after school. He talked to Long Meadow rec coaches in the late afternoon, and then in the early evening, he met with parents. And so it was a good sort of community conversation, I'd say, and I think everybody had some good takeaways in terms of how we can support student athletes and encourage everyone to have a healthy approach to athletics. So it was successful. Our next event is in January, when we will be airing the documentary Screenagers, and that is a documentary on the role of social media in teenagers' lives these days. So we're looking forward to that. So that's all I have. Questions?
Jess, do you have a question?
Yeah, Russ, did you? I'll set it over here. I know that I, thank you, Marty. I know that I don't need to tell anyone in Long Meadow how incredible Larry Birdie is. Former LHS principal, so grateful to have him stepping in at Williams right now during a somewhat tenuous time for students and staff there. It is just amazing that he was able to come, and I know every, or speak for everyone on this committee and administrators when I say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you" to Larry. I've already heard how much he's accomplished in the short time he's been there. So thank you to him. And thank you to Marty and Stephanie very much to go into the sexual misconduct conference at the, I believe it was at the request of Jen Falcone, who's very vocal on that issue. And thank you, big thank you to Jen, and to you all for attending. I look forward to hearing more about that. And thank you, Marty, for the updates.
Can we move on to Sue's report?
Good evening. I just realized it was supposed to be a brief report, and it looks a little long the line, so I'm going to try to summarize. Let's see, the first thing on the report is a really great picture of, I think this is a fourth grade class at Blueberry Hill, using their Foss Science Kits. I thought I'd give you a picture of what their experiments look like. This is, I think, an experiment on erosion and deposition, and kids are deciding which things run off, and which soils run off, and which stay. But the Foss Science Kits have been great. We've got really positive feedback from students and staff alike. And the experiments are great. They really dive into lots of different areas, but they use a range of mathematics. They have areas that they apply logic and reasoning and problem-solving, and then they have some creative ways to display what they've learned. So they're doing a lot more STEAM activities by nature of default through Foss than they were in the past, which is really wonderful. Textbook requests are in, I think, for everybody. They include new high school French and Spanish books, calculus and personal finance and chemistry and biology at the high school, although the biology books are not new, they just need additional biology books, I think. And the high school department chairs are leading those processes, and they'll give us estimates as soon as possible on those. For PD, one of our favorite PD providers has become, he's a local guy, Mike Flynn. He's from Mount Holyoke College. I think I've talked about him before, but he has come to our elementary schools a couple times already this year to provide some embedded, ongoing PD for us. And it's neat because each school, the coaches at each school, the specialists are tailoring the PD to that needs of that individual school, and all of them have a big emphasis on getting kids to become engaged and curious about math. So that's a really fun PD for teachers, and then students are benefiting from that immediately. Elementary report cards are up and running. Teachers are grading based on standards. I think I gave you a copy of a draft report card in the packet. That's a grade four draft. And just a huge thanks to Osa and our tech department. This is all the work that she does behind the scenes to get what we envision on paper, and it's just a huge job, and she's just been amazing. She's been at every meeting and digs into it, and so we really appreciate that. I guess the big news is our MCAS results, or everyone's MCAS results, and I know that we're going to have a more involved report, I think, November 15th, so where we can get into the nitty-gritty of how the district scored. Basically, students in grades three through eight took the new Next Generation version of the assessment, and students at the high school level took the original legacy version that they've been taking for quite some years now. Long Meadow has scored above the state average at every grade level in math and science across the board, so kudos to our students and our staff who got them there. They've done a super job on this new MCAS. We haven't done a deep dive into the scores yet, but one great place was, all of our high school students scored proficient or higher in English Language Arts. It's amazing. And 72% of our students scored in the advanced range, and 75% of our high school math students scored in advanced range. That's just, it's amazing. Those numbers are amazing, really they are. The major differences between the legacy MCAS and the Next Generation MCAS, there are major differences, I should say. The Next Generation MCAS is the assessment of a student's critical thinking abilities, application of knowledge, and the ability to make connections between reading and writing, kind of really assessing those skills that are necessary to hold the kinds of jobs that we don't even know that exist yet in the future. So they're really pushing kids in those directions. They're being asked to demonstrate their learning in a variety of ways, and the new MCAS establishes a higher rigor. You didn't take it, right, Peggy, this year, this past year?
No.
Yeah, you're too old. So the expected outcome was that the assessment results will better represent how students are progressing throughout the standards. The new test looks very different. Parents are going to get their scores home next week. There's new scoring categories. The new categories are exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. And I think it's really important to remember that they in no way should be compared to last year's categories of proficient, you know, in those. There's just not a way to do an analysis of those. They're just different animals, and the Department of Ed is really warning against kind of doing that. Department of Ed predicted that more students will likely score in the meeting expectations and partially meeting expectations category than in exceeding, and I think that is a true trend across the state, and it also is true in Long Meadow. We can talk more about that, I guess, on the 15th. I think as always, we should remember that MCAS just gives us one data point. We're looking at that, that's a snapshot in time for our students, and the way that we need to be mindful and considering the daily growth of our students and looking at our formative and somatic assessments throughout the year is really important. Let's see. The expectation is that our students' performance on the Next Generation MCAS will rise. I don't know if anybody remembers when the MCAS first came out, those first group of kids that took it in the second and third year, they're kind of like normative years, and the scores have pretty steadily risen since then. The state's expectation is that the same will happen as the test gets practiced and the standards get addressed. So we're hoping to see that. Let's see. We have a grant hanging out there called a radar grant. The Department of Ed is taking on a major benchmarking project called the Resource Allocation and District Action Reports. And so we can go on to the DESI website and take a look at how our students are performing compared to how many English teachers we have. There's a ton of fiscal data in there, and then our performance data is in there as well. And the Department of Ed really wants us to start using data to make decisions regarding fiscal management and best practice. So they are offering grants to districts or who examine and question resource allocation in more depth, who make meaningful changes in resource allocation to support best practices and district improvement strategies, and districts who really measure the impact of resource shifts on desired outcomes. So Tom and I went to a workshop, oh, I don't know, months ago now, and put in a letter that we were going to apply. So we actually did write the application. Jean Fontaine and I wrote that a couple of weeks ago. We applied for that, and we applied for $50,000. It was a two-year grant, so 25 one year and 25 the next year. And we'll let you know if we get it. We'll let you know. And it comes with a consultant, which is really cool, data consultants, which I think we would be really helpful for us, so.
And underscore that quickly, when we're talking about the budget and with the Finance Committee and with the Select Board, I think it's, you know, hopefully people understand that this represents part of our efforts to be cost-effective and make sure we're getting the most bang for our buck, and that we're putting our resources where they belong, where we'll see the most results.
Yeah.
So we're excited about this. I think it'll really encourage us to use the radar reports that are, as Sue said, very, very rich, so.
That was fast, but, phew.
Thank you.
I know we have only an hour, right?
So the MCAS reports. At the next meeting, I assume for 10th grade, we'll get the five-year chart that we usually get with how we've done over that five-year period, including this one.
Sure.
Because that didn't change. With three through eight, at least I personally would still like to see it, not compared to the new, you know, the new scores or data that came out, but just for historical information, because I want to see, I know we had some areas that were kind of weak, and some areas that we were strong in different grades, and I want to see if that played out in the new test data as well.
Okay.
Not to compare it to this, but to see if the trends are similar. That's just my own opinion, but I know you can't do it the same way you're going to do 10th grade, but I'd still like to see the old data as well.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sure.
If other committee members have any thoughts on what you'd like to see as part of that achievement and accountability presentation, just, you know, let us know, and we'll do our best to incorporate it.
Stephanie?
I just want to respond to Russ. I just worry about comparing them at all. I mean, they're really two different beasts. So I don't, you know, I don't know, Sue, how you feel about this, but it's really, it would be, I think it would be worth looking into that a little more before we...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is I want to, I know that there's one place in particular I brought up last year that is very low. I want to see if that's very low again.
Yeah. It's...
That's really all it is, so. Because you have, you know, one grade where they're 98, one grade where they're 13, one grade, the next grade they're 92. I just want to see if that played out again. It's not so much, I'm not going to... The scores themselves are irrelevant because they're going to be totally different. I just want to see if there's that big dip in that one grade again.
So there's less of a dip.
In one, so one particular grade you're looking at.
We checked back in first thing, so there's less of a dip there.
Yeah.
On a more challenging assessment, which is good.
Look at performance relative to the rest of the state or other districts that we benchmark against, so.
Or the, it sounds like you're looking at the other grades, is what you're trying to, or other grade.
Yeah, there's just, at least for the last couple of years, when I've seen the data on the committee, there's always been this one where it dipped pretty low. So I just want to see, it sounds like that's improving, so.
Okay. Okay. With the expectation that we'll continue to do something.
Yeah, but not overall. I mean, it's, I know it's totally different.
Yeah, I just worry parents are going to, if we bring it here and do it, I'm worried parents are going to do it and not for the same reason that you're looking, kind of deal.
Yeah. It doesn't even have to be in the same charts. It could just be, I just want the data available to me.
It's all over my office, stuck on the wall, so if you want to pop in and ask.
I don't.
Any other questions for Sue? And just quickly, a question on that note to the committee. In the past, we've had the principals come and present along, you know, along with Sue our MCAS results. Is there, do you have a preference as to wanting them or not wanting them to be here? And if so, could you just let me know? You would like them here? Yes? Is there anybody who feels otherwise?
Is the 15th a day or an evening?
Well, we can schedule it accordingly. I just want to know, you know, so if it, I think we'll do it at night if the principals are involved, but if you'd like to have them here for questions or whatever.
I'm not a big fan of that particular presentation personally. I will obviously defer to the majority of the committee, but I think a report is sufficient, and then if there are questions, you know, we could follow up in whatever way we feel is appropriate, but I don't personally think having all the principals come out on the evening to do all that is necessary, so.
We could do it in a couple of stages. We could, if you wanted to stick with the 15th, we could do a, Sue and I could do a report, and then the principals will be here, I think, on the 29th with their school improvement plan, so that might be an opportunity to dive deeper if you wanted to.
With questions.
So I'm just throwing that out as a suggestion.
I suspect that there's going to be a lot of questions by parents, simply because the categories are different, and what does this mean? They have no comparison, so that's the only reason. Well, I found it helpful in the past, but it might be helpful for them to be present just to be able to address the questions that they've gotten from parents so we can hear, because it is different this year, and what parents can do with the information and what they can't.
I think our parents will find that the parent reports are richer than what they've seen in the past, and that could be, that could create more questions, or it could lessen the questions. We'll have to see how that plays out, I'm not sure.
Anybody else have? I was leaning towards the same position as Jess, and having, you know, just the report without them being here first and then having follow-up questions afterwards, just to make it less of a intense, I think, but again, I just want the committee to decide, so.
Yeah, I don't know, sorry. No, I just wanted to add that I think in previous years and maybe going forward, that would totally be unnecessary. My point of view is that because it's such a changing year, it's such a shift when we're going from the legacy to the new, it kind of, I think, is helpful to have the principals kind of frame it in the right context and drive home that point that you really can't take this year's test and compare it to what you've seen in the past. The level of rigor, I think those types of issues are important for principals to kind of communicate and reiterate to parents so that they're not, you know, alarmed, or, you know, they can answer the proper questions. But I would agree that probably going forward after this one kind of outlier year, that maybe we wouldn't need them every year to come.
Just for you, I think we're flexible, we can go either way on this. If we want, if we wanted to do it at night and you wanted the principals here, that would line up with your meeting on the 29th of November. That may be too much of a lag time between the time when the parents get the reports and we do a public presentation, so just something to consider. We can go either way with this. I just, I don't want to, I don't want to have all the questions flying around and people looking for answers, and it would be almost a month, yeah.
Jess?
I don't like the idea of putting, it's, historically, it's been this really uber-intense sort of situation, putting the principals on the spot with the MCAS. Something about it just really doesn't sit well with me, because there are no other circumstances except for budget that, and I don't even know if we did it for budget last year. Did we have them come and speak to the budget last year?
I don't think so, yeah.
But it's sort of, you know, I'd rather have the principals come and talk about what they're doing in the schools, and, you know, meaningful things that are going on, and it just gives it a life that I don't know that it should be given. And again, it really puts our administrators on the spot for these MCAS scores, and it can be quite uncomfortable for them at times. And so that's my own two cents about it. I do understand that there's an argument to be made with the shift this year, but I feel confident that we can cover that here through Sue and through Marty and maybe somebody else coming, but I just don't feel comfortable having this designated, huge, big, you know, put the principals on the spot for the MCAS scores again this year.
Melanie?
And I'm feeling pretty confident that each principal will have a letter going out to the families and from their school, kind of explaining where their school stands and what we might be seeing here, or what we're, you know, don't overinterpret this, or whatever, to where we might not have to have a formal, maybe catch them on the 29th if we do have questions.
Sue?
I liked Marty's idea, which was have you and Sue present on the 15th, and then the principals will be there anyway on the 29th, and we could ask them questions at that point instead of having them present.
I like that, yeah.
But I actually like putting them on the spot.
I know you do, Russ.
So it's, I mean, I think they're all doing a great job.
I don't.
You can do it on the 29th.
And so I, and I tell them that at the meeting, but I also like to ask questions about why is that one grade so much better, and why is that other grade not as good, and what's going on with that, so.
Sue?
Kind of the nature of their job.
We talked about it this morning a bit, actually, about what would be good information to present, and sometimes the numbers are not really the story. So we ask them to think about areas of strength and areas of challenge, and talk about how they got to those areas of strength and what they might be putting in place to address the areas of challenge, which is really kind of, I think, what you want to know. Right? What are you doing to fix this, and what are you doing to keep this rising that you're rising? And so that was kind of the flavor that we were hoping that would be okay with you. And if you want to know if parents have questions that principals are asking, we can certainly gather those and let you know. I do think it, you know, people are going to look at it and go, you know, wow, this is really different, but...
Sue's expecting reports back from the principals in about, at the end of next week, I think, yeah.
And that's really the point of my questions each year, is really, what are we doing well in those areas, and what can we improve on? It's not so much the scores themselves, you know.
Stephanie?
I just wanted to also add, that survey that's on the MCAS had some really great questions, and I did get that email, so we were going to get that. I'm almost more interested in that information, because there's not a whole lot I feel like we can do with the MCAS results this year, not having anything to compare them to, and...
Right.
But that survey had some really quality questions.
So that's a school climate survey that their 10th graders took at the conclusion of their exam, and I agree, I think there's, it's potentially some great information for us, and it's really to start assessing schools on, in some non-academic indicators. Are there ways that we can get some feedback, use the MCAS process to get some feedback on students in schools that maybe aren't totally academic, you know? So I don't, I'm not sure we'll have those in hand, though, by the 15th. I'm thinking we won't, but as soon as that's available, we can share it up.
That'd be great.
So that survey, it's taken at the same time that students are taking the test, so there are some identifiable markers? If there's, will kids be addressed individually on any...
I think we'll just get aggregate.
Aggregate.
I think it'll be aggregate reports. I don't think we'll get individual reports on how students responded to that climate survey. It's a great question, though.
Okay. I think if we're, it sounds like we're more comfortable as a committee having the presentation on the 15th by Sue and Marty and information, and then on the 29th, we can address any additional questions. Karen, did you want to weigh in?
So will we just, will we set aside time in the agenda then for questions specifically about the MCAS with the principals, or we'll just...
We can do that as well as, you know, if we find that on the 15th, our answers aren't, you know, we can certainly leave aside, leave time aside. Okay.
Yeah, if we need to supplement it on the 29th, we can do that, yeah.
Absolutely, and that would be, okay. All right, let's move on to Tom.
So I apologize, I don't have a written report for you, so I have a few things to update you on, though. On Friday, we'll be having our first safety and security meeting, so representatives from police, fire, DPW, school and district administrators will be meeting to talk about some of our emergency situation procedures and some trainings that have been taking place at the beginning of the school year to address any issues or commonalities that might have been coming up during these trainings. Along those lines, today, I attended a family reunification training with representatives from the fire department, the health department, and a district, a school administrator. It was sponsored by the Western Region Homeland Security Advisory Council, so it provided a tremendous amount of resources that I'm sure we'll be talking about on Friday. We practice a lot of drills, but a reunification is not a drill that we've practiced, and it, you know, there's a lot of logistics associated with what would be needed if a reunification were to have to take place at some point because of the situation. So we'll be talking with the school-based administrators and giving them some resources also to kind of help plan and work with them on... to kind of help plan and work with them on how to develop, you know, a plan for a situation. We're meeting on Monday with myself, Jess, and Marty to look at the capital. We'll have that on the November fifteenth agenda for the committee to review a number of projects. We'll put them in a proposed priority order and then the committee can review and make any changes that they see fit. Also, I'll hopefully touch base with Michelle to schedule a food service advisory committee meeting in the next week or two. The bid will be done sometime probably midwinter as we are in the final year of our contract with Woodsons, who is our current service provider for the food service program. And finally, we, we have training scheduled on November thirtieth for COP Sync, which is the software that the committee approved funding for back in June. So we have decided to go with a train, the trainer model. So again, with representatives from police, fire, district, and school-based administrators, we have a training scheduled to kind of get a better understanding of how the software works and when to utilize it, how we practice it. So they will be here on that date to go through that training with us. And then we'll be bringing it back to the schools and planning our implementation. And that is it.
Thank you. Breggy, I'm going to skip my report. Breggy, do you have?
Yeah, so there's a lot of good things happening in the high school right now. On Monday, we had college fair, so we got to take time off class. And we just, there's a bunch of colleges in the cafeteria, just walked around and we, you could talk to them. And like, they handed out brochures and stuff like that. As Mr. O'Shea mentioned, there's a, um, there's a guest speaker for all the student athletes in the auditorium. And he talked a lot about like the extra one percent you have to give to be successful. And we all learned a lot from that. And sophomore lock-in went pretty well. And I know everybody had a good time and I think they made some, uh, some good fundraising off of it. Sports is doing pretty well. I know for soccer, there's senior night today, so that'll be fun. And, um, for our committee, our email, we haven't gotten any responses yet. So I'm not like, I think it's, um, I, I don't think a lot of people know it exists. Because like we sent out an email, but like people, we get a ton of emails, so people don't like really read all of them. So I think we could, we could like put it on the TVs around or we could like have an announcement or something like that to let people know.
Great. All right, Melanie?
Do the students ever get any kind of like a technical blast? Because they probably would.
Yeah, right. We're not there yet.
They'd be right there with that. That's a really good idea.
But the announcement is, do they just do announcements?
We do.
Yes.
I know in the past, Breggy, there's been different Twitter accounts for different grade levels. Is there, are there still like a ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th, 12th grade Twitter account that you could send a, a blast out that way?
Yeah, they, they have like a school Snapchats too. Yeah, we could do that.
That's great. Yeah, that's great. That, that would get them to at least see it.
It's not so much to read. It's, it's a, just a quick, you know.
Right.
Whatever it is, it has to be fast.
That's right.
Something that they pay attention to.
Parents are getting that way, too.
All right. Keep us posted on how that turns out. All right. Let's move on to the finance subcommittee report.
We have the athletic report, which we have in the packet here. It's, um, for today, it's really just for your information and review. And then we'll have the athletic director coming on November twenty-ninth to give an actual presentation, so.
Yeah, we'll just add if there's any questions as you're reviewing the documents, if you could just send them to me and I'll forward them on to Michael Capitastos so he can be prepared with whatever additional information he may need to, to address the question.
Yeah, and if you could review this in time, I would say to get those questions or to Tom by next Wednesday. I think that would give them enough time to prepare for the following.
Thank you.
Or actually, we're, we have a month between now and then, so if you could do it by, by the next meeting, I think. Does that sound?
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Okay.
Thank you.
By the fifteenth, November fifteenth.
And last year, we put in additional, what, fifty grand, was it?
Uh, seventy-five thousand. So we, we had seventy-five thousand initially or regularly budgeted. And we, we went up to a hundred and fifty thousand in the FY18 budget.
So then we have the building use request. So there's, let me just read the motions. I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved the use of the Long Meadow High School auditorium and classrooms on March seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen by Big Sing West and waive the building use fees, but the custodial fees will be assessed.
Discussion?
Kayla Wurland came to the finance subcommittee and spoke to, in support of the request to waive the fees. She anticipates a number of students will be participating and supporting the program. It's the first time we have hosted it here, but it's been in churches, I believe, in, in the Western Mass area in the past. So she thought it was a great opportunity for Long Meadow students to have this program right here taking place in the auditorium and along with Long Meadow educators, an opportunity to kind of come and see some youth and talent from the communities, so.
Is this high school, is this high school students only? I thought that's what it was.
Yeah, I thought there were some younger age groups too, but I may be wrong.
So my daughter went to something, well, this last year, I guess it was. And I didn't ask her specifically. I think I'm going to abstain from this one, actually, just in case. But we, we filed that disclosure, but I'll probably abstain anyway. I don't know if my daughter's going to this, so.
Stephanie?
What is the past history with waiving fees? Do we have like a precedent or?
Yeah, we, we most certainly, when there's a program coming in that benefits the district, students in the district, we most certainly have taken consideration when, especially if they're a nonprofit. Even though they are charging, I believe, a three-dollar fee to enter into the program, it's just offset their cost. So we, we've taken into consideration, what do they charge and what, what's the revenue being used for? And are they a nonprofit organization? And does the district or the students in the district benefit at all from the program being, you know, here in Long Meadow?
And it says on here, LHS Tri-M Music Honor Society co-sponsors and helps facilitate, so they're part of it?
Yes, correct. Even though it's not their particular program, because if it is, then there wouldn't be any charge. But since it's really an outside entity requesting use of the facilities, that's why there would be a fee.
On the back of the request form, in case you didn't notice, Kayla outlined some reasons, you know, that, some ways that the students would be involved for us. And we thought that was useful as a finance sub in, in deciding that this would fall under the category of waiving the fees. So any other questions or discussion on that? Seeing none, let's call for a vote. All those in favor, opposed, and abstained. Okay?
Okay, so the next item in your packet is a memorandum regarding FY18 grant acceptance, acceptance. So as a committee, we need to accept these grants that are listed. And I can read the motion, which is I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee accept the FY18 grants as specified in the document titled FY18 Grant Award Memo dated October eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion or questions? Okay, let's call for a vote. All those in favor, opposed, and abstained.
The next document is FY18 Grants and Special Revenues Revision Number One. And again, we need to vote to approve. Anything you want to say about that, Tom?
So yeah, these would be budget transfers to the FY18 budget. When we're developing the budget every year, we make some assumptions in regards to how much we anticipate the grant award may be for each grant that we anticipate receiving. We don't know until usually sometime in the summer or early, early fall what the actual award amount will be. So this is to recognize the amount of the actual award and transfer the funds in accordance where we believe we anticipate spending that, those funds. So the total in terms of all the changes is a net increase to the budget of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, ninety-three dollars and ninety-two cents. And a majority of that, a hundred and twenty-five thousand of that comes from the Drug Free Community Grant, which we, we just were awarded back in late September.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, we'll call for a vote. We are, um, the question of school committee approved the budget revision as outlined in the document titled FY18 Grants and Special Revenues Amendment dated October eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen. All those in favor? Oh, sorry.
A second?
We did, I thought.
Rescind the motion.
I don't think so, but you just did.
Oh, I, I didn't mean to. Okay.
I don't think I did.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed and abstained. Sorry, I thought we had that on the table. And the revolving report?
Yeah, so it's just informational. It is the final FY17 revolving account report. So these would be funds that we have where we receive revenue, whether it be through fees or money that's collected for various activities in the district, athletics, school lunch, preschool tuition, school rental. So this is showing the activity on a fiscal year basis from July one, two thousand and sixteen through June thirtieth of two thousand and seventeen. So it's the final report. Now that the fiscal year has been closed, I just wanted to make sure that I provided the information through finance sub to the school committee. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have in regards to the information.
Okay. No one has anything? We can move on to the subcommittee reports, policy. Have not met since the last meeting. Do you know, do you have a date set for the next?
Yes, I checked with Marty. We're going to meet before Operation Sub. And then Marty's going to join us at like ten, so we'll go over the older stuff, review it, and then when he comes.
That's the seventh?
So November seventh.
Okay.
Oh, oh, oh. And, and Operation.
Okay. Operation Subcommittee, do you have a report?
Yeah, so the Operations Subcommittee met last Tuesday and we spent pretty much the entire time. Marty and Tom drafted a great starting document for the long-range plan. It includes nine areas of need currently. So we worked on just the discussion of the plan, revising it, adding additional areas concerning educational fiscal capital issues. We discussed making it clear that this is really just a snapshot in time, that it's also a non-binding document. And then we had a few questions that we needed to throw back to the select board and Mr. Crane. And we believe we're going to need additional time discussing the document before it comes to the full school committee and then go to them. So we're not going to make the November first deadline, but.
Okay. And you've been in communication with Stephen about that and everything's good? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Any questions for Operation Sub? Okay, and other reports? LPVEC, Stephanie, do you have anything?
We had a meeting on October eighteenth. A lot, they, they talked about a lot, but I think in terms of what may be helpful for this committee is they, they talked about their strategic plan and they had their annual update. But it was really informative for me as a new member of the board to hear what LPVEC does. They went over their mission, their vision, their values, their programs. And so four of their programs, I thought perhaps many people don't really know what goes on there. And I'm still learning and they offered to give me a tour of all of the different programs and I'm going to, and take them up on that. But they offer education programs, career, technical education, special ed, alternative ed. Then they offer business programs. They, they do the school transportation, municipal Medicaid reimbursement, energy group purchasing. Then they offer education, educator support, curriculum instruction assessment, and, and then, and some other things. And then they also do organizational operations, finance, human source, human resources, information tech, physical plant. They really have a lot going on there. And they spoke about the programs where they're needing to expand, some programs where, you know, they're combining with other ones. And, and so it was a really helpful meeting in terms of learning a little bit more about what they do. So I look forward to, I'm really excited, actually, to be on there. And I look forward to, through the years, to, to bring you more information as to what's going on there. I really think that the more information we're aware of the programming, we can disseminate that information. And I think it's not known by a lot of people as to what's going on and what they offer. And I think we can help, help them. They can help us. So I'm looking forward to it.
Great. Thank you.
I also, we had, we also had the corporate meeting right after that. So I attended that and I have to agree with Stephanie. It was, it was really informative and I'm really thrilled to be on the committee because I think I'm going to learn a lot from it. But just from the corporation side, and they gave a lot of background as to why they're a separate corporation and collaborative. So Stephanie's on the collaborative and I'm on the corporation. And, and so they talked a lot about currently what they're looking to do is to create an autism center and a social-emotional program because they're bursting at the seams in those two programs. So from the corporation side of it, they're looking for space. So they're looking for a building that would function as a center just to house this specialty. So it was interesting and I also think maybe we can meet up and go on the tour together.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting. So their next meeting that we'll both be at is November fifteenth where they're having their auditors report for both the collaborative and the corporation.
Great. Thank you both so much. SEAL, any reports from SEAL?
So SEAL, I, and Karen can, we can piggyback on this. It was, we had a meeting on October third. And some things that were talked about is Park and Rec is going to be having students from Springfield College come and do three different one-hour lectures covering topics of talking about autism awareness, inclusion. And that's going to be given to Greenwood staff as well as offered to coaches in the Park and Rec. That's really been a mission of the SEAL for a while, is really trying to connect with Park and Rec and try to make the programs that are offered more inclusive to, to all of the kids. So this was really a big step I was really excited about in trying to bring more to Park and Rec and just open it up to some kids who, who haven't been necessarily successful and, and really should be and can be. So this is a great first step. And they're also going to be having, the basic rights presentation's going to be on Tuesday, December fifth. Mass PAC is going to present on basic rights and special ed. And then we're also going to be having intro to transition planning for, for, for ages fourteen to twenty-two. Was there, that's February sixth, I think. We talked a lot about programming, really. Park and Rec, that was a big thing when we held a coffee hour at preschool and got input from, received input from parents was Park and Rec and really getting kids, allowing them to participate. So really trying to make it more inclusive. And this was one piece. And then we're looking at mentors and bringing in students to really help those kids out on, out on the field. So some good, good progress there.
Thank you. Okay, food services, we are in the process of starting to schedule. And capital, your meeting, are you?
Monday.
Monday. Okay, great. Let's move on to school committee goals. Sue and Beth did a great job of fine-tuning all of our admission, you know, the goals that we had individually submitted and they helped to make them into actionable items. If you look at your packet, they listed actually what had, what had been submitted by us, the exact wording. And then in the revised benchmark of objectives, created bulleted points. So I'm assuming everyone read through those and reviewed them. Are there any questions or discussions related to them? Anybody? I think they look fantastic and I'm really, really excited about how you incorporated. Any, anybody? I think they look fantastic, and I'm really, really excited about how you incorporated everybody's ideas and thoughts into, uh, into actionable objectives. Do you have your hand up?
I just had a couple, a few maybe stylistic suggestions, but I can just email them if that's better. Just in terms of the bullet points, I thought it would be good to keep, in, just like, for example, instead of by collaborating or by supporting or by supporting in that first section, just saying, um, collaborate, support, support. Sounds a little stronger, just, and just to keep it consistent in the present tense throughout the document. Under benchmark, any, anywhere under benchmarks and objectives.
So you want him to say, like, read the first one to me, like, how you think you might like that?
So, yeah, I, and I, I would say just use, I like objectives instead of the slash, but, um, either way, I'm fine. But I just, with the bullet points, they should say collaborate with, support the implementation, support the foundational skills. You know what I'm saying? So we would get rid of.
Take out the by.
Yeah, it should just be in present tense, um, and it should be consistent throughout the document, I think, because it's, it flows a little bit better that way. So anywhere under, under benchmarks and objectives, instead of by support, supporting, it was, read support, appropriate and effective non-teaching staff. Create a reference packet, develop a plan, develop a plan. And then, and then again, further down where it says, at the bottom of that page, it says to work, I would just slash the to and say work with administration. These are just little.
So that's just still the old.
That's not part of the goal.
Yeah, that's not part of, but I would just change that.
Do you wanna just, having worked on policy with Jess, she's very good. Do you wanna just send her the edits?
Those were really just my main edits. Yeah.
So it's really just grammatical change.
Yeah, just.
So in terms of the substance of what's on here right now, um, I think it, we don't have a motion on the, on the, um, agenda, but I was hoping that we could just approve these in terms of the, the substance of them tonight so that they're ready to be put up on the, um, on the website.
So that was my question. What were we gonna do with this tonight? Just I did send a few just minor things to Sue.
Okay.
But they didn't make it on this. So, how do we go about getting that? And again, they were little things. They weren't grammatical, but, um, regarding the new member packet, I just suggested that we add, um, like, in collaboration with administration, town clerk, and current members. Because there was a lot that came through the town clerk, too.
Okay.
A big chunk of that orientation needs to come from them. There are two or three things that, that are their responsibility to pass on to us, so. And I have already sent that to her, so I don't know if, does that mean she can just add it?
You can talk offline.
Right.
Got it. So, um, okay, so then, since your changes were a little bit more than just grammatical, does it make sense to get it into one more? Just ha, and, and please, like, by tomorrow, submit whatever changes that you want, honestly.
Are you passing out to everybody again?
Well, no, no, but, um, and, and Sue will get that into a final document for us to approve by motion at the next meeting. Um, and she will have that by the end of the week. Does that, or by, you know, like, by Wednesday, how about? So that it can go into the packet and everything.
Yeah.
But get with Sue by tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, sound good? If you haven't already, so. All right, thank you. Uh, Russ?
Thank you, Sue.
On the third page, I would agree with that comment that we could delete the fourth bullet if we added, as well as school committee business in the third bullet. It seems to cover the same thing. I don't know whose suggestion. It's in purple.
That was mine in purple to just kind of consolidate.
So I like her suggestion.
You're looking at the purple highlighted.
Okay. Let's see if we can squeeze one more thing in. Oh, uh, how about the MASC annual business meeting? I'm gonna move ahead just to get one more thing in before we start our joint meeting. Uh, during the joint conference in November, MASC will hold the annual business meeting. School committee should review the resolutions which are voted on during the business meeting at MASC. The delegate will vote as directed by the full committee. So you have in your packet the resolutions. I'm assuming everybody has already reviewed these. You haven't?
No, I have, but I feel like there's some communication that this might not be.
Okay. So how about, um, first, if we just, um, because there's a chance that I'm not going to make it to that meeting in time, and I don't wanna be late for it. Um, I'm gonna ask the committee to re-vote a delegate, and Russ has volunteered, so I would like to appoint, I would like to nominate Russ to attend the meeting and vote as we direct him to on our behalf. As our, okay. Okay, correct, as our alternate.
We've already put in who the delegate is, and we said Russ was the alternate.
Oh, we did already, so we don't even need to vote.
We already filed it with MASC.
Okay.
And I can't redo it now.
Okay.
It's done.
Okay.
Okay.
He is the alternate.
And he, you told, you asked for an alternate.
Perfect.
And I knew you would have, um, volunteered, so we just did it.
I didn't, because I already was a.
There was a deadline.
Great, thank you. All right.
So you're done.
So I think there is really nothing short that we can squeeze in here right now. Why don't we recess until we start up the joint meeting at seven thirty? So we have four minutes to recess. And then we will have the Select Board open their meeting in two hours.
Uh, good evening and welcome to this joint meeting of the Select Board and the School Board and representative of the Finance Committee also. Uh, we're gonna be going over the budget, uh, altogether. And, um, we generally start with a pledge of allegiance, but, um, I don't know if we'll do that. I think we might waive that today, or should we start? Stephen, he, all right, we're ready to go. Richard says let's go. Let's start with that then. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stand, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so we will be going over the, the numbers. We, we do this meeting, uh, every year in the fall, uh, to get some ideas about how our spending should go, to make sure we're not overspending, uh, and we never have the problem of underspending, I'm sure Paul will see that's not. Uh, so I guess I will, uh, start, uh, I don't know if there's any comments, um, from the Select Board or the School Board that, if anyone has any comments you need to start with about this meeting, or? Okay, then I believe we'll just move right on to have the presentation, and I will turn it over to Paul Pesterzak, our, uh, Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you. Um, I hope everyone has a handout. There are a few extras for anyone who does not have a handout. We are having some technical difficulty, so it will not be portrayed on the screen at this point in time. So, uh, I can put it on, uh, on the, on the website for, for the audience so they can actually see what is being presented. But I normally start this, it's, it's the beginning of the FY nineteen budget process, and it gives us an idea of, of what we're gonna be confronted with in the year coming. Uh, many times I preface this saying that my, my estimates are conservative. Um, they are a little more aggressive this, this year in the fact that, uh, in the years past, I never put in any additional money in from the state aid or from the local receipts. Um, this year I have put in a small increase already in there, which we will go over. Um, so like I said, they are a little bit more aggressive this year than they historically have been in the past. I also start the program off with a little introduction at the Prop two and a half. Uh, it is a reminder for those officials who have been around for a while, and kind of an introduction for those who have not had to deal with it. In their official capacity before. But Prop two and a half has two constraints built into the law. People know about the two and a half percent, that the, uh, the tax levy can go up every year. But there is also an additional constraint that we cannot go above two and a half percent of our full taxable valuation every, every year. Um, that would equate to roughly a twenty-five dollar tax rate excluding those, um, taxable items or taxable processes, uh, that take effect through, uh, bond exclusions or capital exclusion accounts. Last year I was fortunate enough to come to this meeting and have a nice surprise that our valuations went up six point three percent in FY seventeen. Um, the news is not that good this year, and we'll get to that momentarily. On page two, it's kind of an estimate of the FY, just the FY eighteen tax rate, just to give you an example of where we are and to show you the exact calculation of the Prop two and a half work. I'm just going to go over in the shaded area for the FY eighteen estimated tax rate. We start off with our prior year levy limit, which was forty-five million, four hundred eighty-four thousand. Uh, we can increase that by the two and a half percent, which is one million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Our new growth for FY two thousand and eighteen, it's into the DOR, it is estimated at two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars at this point in time. I do not believe it's certified, but should be certified, uh, hopefully at that number, for a levy limit of forty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. We then include what are the, uh, impacts of the debt exclusions that we currently have. Uh, we have about four or five different debt exclusions that the town has voted, the biggest one being the Long Meadow High School project. We still have a couple more years, uh, of payments on the, uh, two elementary schools, Blueberry Hill and Wolf Swamp. Uh, I think those are retired roughly the year two thousand and twenty-two. Um, and I do believe there is one small, um, drainage project that is also a debt exclusion. But the total of that debt service for FY eighteen is the three point eight nine million dollars that is shown there for a maximal allowable levy of fifty million, seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. The actual levy at this point in time, I'm estimating to be the exact number with, with the maximum is. And if we did a tax rate, we're just dividing it into the estimated value, which as you can see, that assessed value from FY eighteen, from FY seventeen, went down roughly five million dollars. Um, as I said, last year it went up six point three percent, or a fairly substantial amount, uh, last year. Uh, we saw, basically what we're seeing is a leveling off in the market, probably some, some timing differences, uh, where we caught a lot of the good news in the FY seventeen, um, rate structure as opposed to maybe the leveling off in the FY eighteen rate structure. But anyway, uh, when we divide that total assessed value into the actual levy, we come out with a tax, an estimated tax rate for FY eighteen of twenty-four thirty-four. But you'll also see on that farthest left-hand corner, um, there is a tax rate for the levy limit of twenty-two dollars and forty-seven cents, and a dollar eighty-seven is strictly attributable to the exclusion. That twenty-two forty-seven is the amount that we wanna really, if you're, if you're looking for an amount to compare to that twenty-five dollars, you would be comparing, you'd be comparing to twenty-two forty-seven. You can also see on the very last, um, bit of information going across the bottom, the remaining taxing capacity that the town of Long Meadow has under its current, um, valuation, um, that is roughly just over five point two million dollars, a decrease from last year where we were six point seven million dollars. And prior to that in FY sixteen, it was four point nine million dollars. On the next page is just some historical perspective, just to show that we have been, for the most part, over the last thirty-three years or so, utilizing the full taxing capacity within the, that the town has. There is three years of, of history with the maximum allowable levy, the actual levy, and the so-called the excess capacity. I'm estimating right now, um, that there will be very little excess capacity in FY eighteen. And you can see the historical amounts of that his, historical excess capacity, um, in that column. Um, on the very bottom is our actual levy years where we did have some, I don't say substantial amounts of excess capacity, but some amounts of excess capacities where we did not go up to the full limit. Nineteen ninety-seven, we did leave almost seven hundred and forty thousand dollars on the table for, for that one year. Um, we do not lose that money when it moves forward. Um, and two years ago, in two thousand and sixteen, excuse me, we left roughly about forty-two thousand dollars that we could have taxed at a little bit of higher amount. Um, again, not a lot of money, would have been about two cents on the tax rate. But this is only to show that, again, um, our demands for services, our budget, just about requires our full taxing capacity that we're allowed under law. The next page is again more historical, uh, more historical information regarding our, uh, our levy and our assessed value. I don't think there's really anything much to go over there. Again, um, that very last column taxes as a percent of assessed value. You can see that the last three years, it went from two point two five percent down to two point one eight percent as a result of the increase in the valuation. Now, when we have the slight decrease in valuation, we're back up to the two point two five percent. Um, that is a trend that is certainly, uh, something that we need to watch again. I believe last year I said we could put that, that monitoring of that ta, uh, the tax twenty-five dollar limit kind of on the back burner. Um, unfortunately, it's now put back on the front burners. We're gonna have to watch that. The next page is actually a projection of when we may hit that twenty-five dollar tax rate. Um, I have entered all the data for FY eighteen. If all that is approved by the Department of Revenue, as I said, our tax rate would be twenty-two forty-seven without the exclusions. There are two assumptions. The top highlighted assumption basically takes only the valuation from new growth and does not include any market value growth. Um, so if there was no types of market value growth for the next four years, uh, next five years, roughly in the year two thousand and twenty-three, we would be confronted that we would not be able to raise taxes any higher than they currently would be.
Paul, when you say market value growth, you mean any sort of other ways to raise funds?
No, I, I, I basically mean that your house today is valued at a hundred thousand.
Well, market value growth. Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, okay. You, you, in, in six years, it's still valued at a hundred thousand dollars. Right.
Okay, sorry.
If there was a, that bottom highlighted line there, it, basically I'm just putting in a figure, if we had a one percent, just a one percent market growth, you know, again, coupled with the growth that comes in from, um, whether there's a new residence or somebody is adding on a, a garage or something like that. That is all included in the top and the bottom, but if we had a one percent in the market growth, um, that number for us hitting that twenty-five dollar tax limit would be pushed off to two thousand and twenty-five. So it's very important, uh, that market growth for the town of Long Meadow. Um, and again, it's something that we just have to be weary of because potentially we could be confronted with that in a very short period of time.
Excuse me, Paul?
Yes.
But there was a period of time, two thousand eight, nine, ten, where we actually had a decrease in market value, and so it could, as much as we could push it off, it could be pulled in, I presume, right?
Say that again, Mark?
If assessed values, property values go down as they did in the two thousand eight to two thousand ten or eleven range, then that number could change. That, that date could come closer than two.
Oh, absolutely. It could, uh, very well jump fairly quickly. Uh, the very last page of this is the historical value going back to nineteen eighty-five. And it, and it will give you, again, the, the impact of where we lost, where we lost a lot of value. You know, at one point in time, we're trying to find exactly where it is on here.
It's just on the next page, I think. Is that what you're looking for?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, not, not, not the new growth, on the very last page. I'm sorry. There's a historical value going back to nineteen eighty-five. Where we have the total assessed value, um, and we did have areas where it, we were very stagnant. Again, nineteen ninety-three, roughly through nineteen ninety, well, almost to two thousand and two, we were very stagnant with very little growth. Again, I'm looking at the total assessed value column.
It dropped from two thousand nine to two thousand ten.
Also, yep.
Paul, could I just have a quick question about, because it's for the Select Board and within the School Committee, but when you say that, that our tax, maximum tax rate, and you showed us the number of twenty-two forty-seven and said that's the one we've gotta compare it by. Does the Department of Revenue look at that, that number as a blended rate for communities that have a split tax rate?
It looks at, it looks at as a single rate.
Okay, so they combine it as if it was a single rate, not after it's been split?
I mean, in reality, they actually look at the amount that you raise in taxation to the two point two five percent. How you split that rate, it really doesn't matter, but it would be looked as a single rate. So, anyway, I don't know if anybody else has any questions. The, the one that I did skip over is just a historical, uh, perspective of our new growth over the last ten years or so. Um, you know, roughly, we've been averaging a little over two hundred thousand dollars, um, which isn't a great number. And we've been making that work over the last number of years, so hopefully we'll, we'll continue with that. and we've been making that work over the last number of years, so hopefully we'll, we'll continue with that. But I just wanted to give people an overview of that, again, the Prop two and a half, because again, I, I do believe we have to keep the radar on that, that tax rate again, only because the rates, or only because the valuations came down by, it was a very small amount, it was point two percent of the total valuation, but it does make a difference when it's going into negative as opposed to the positive. The residential valuation went down point three percent overall, and there was a, an increase in the commercial of point seven percent. But our, our residential is ninety-five percent of the total value, so it, it very easily wiped away that little growth in the, in the commercial aspect.
Sorry, I just want to make a point about the valuation, Sergeant. Just to, for the folks who are relatively new, on the valuation, it is a, basically, a year behind home sales. So the valuation is, it's a year-old data by the time they certainly certify the valuation of communities, which is why the two thousand eight, two thousand seven, two thousand eight national, you know, decrease in the real estate market was reflected in the two thousand nine valuation. So as you kind of think of where does that number come from, it's last year's sales.
Now, the very last two pages on here, the one that is, starts with the FY nineteen budget sources and uses is really the main crux of why we're here, just to kind of set the tone for the budget process. The numbers that I just recently did over the last day or so are slightly different from what were sent out to the selectmen, and maybe other people have saw that we had a deficit of five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. As a result of that new growth number coming in in FY eighteen, that number did drop slightly, but we've not anything to, you know, brag about, we still have the same concerns. We're still starting off the year, what I'm estimating, with well over a million dollars in deficit, with the certain assumptions that I'll go over. I'm basically taking the incremental amounts here, when I go over this process, I'm taking the incremental amounts of what the increases in revenues were between FY eighteen and nineteen, and then I will take the incremental expenses between FY eighteen and nineteen that I'm estimating, and that's where we're coming up with, with the difference of that five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. The Prop two and a half percent increase, again, a simple calculation, it's basically just that, just, just the amount of, of the last year's prior levy limit, one million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. I've put in a number here for estimated new growth for FY nineteen of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That will certainly help us a little bit. We have a decrease in the debt exclusion of two hundred and nine thousand dollars. That is basically going to be taken away. We retired the last short-term notes that we had on the high school in FY eighteen. We had two hundred thousand dollars that we had to come up with, which we did over FY seventeen in the eighteen period, and also we just refinanced the high school saving, roughly, it's going to amount to about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year once that fully kicks in. But as a result of those, and there, and there are some add-ons, the DPW is coming into play, so there's a whole multitude of things going on. But overall, I'm anticipating that that debt exclusion number will come down by two hundred and nine thousand dollars, and I'm also increasing, it shows here as a decrease, but it, it decreases the revenues, because I'm increasing our overlay account. Our overlay account is used for property valuation disputes. FY nineteen happens to be a revaluation year for the town of Long Meadow, and during a revaluation year, there are far more abatements and far more challenges against the assessed values of the residents. So there's a slight increase put aside for that.
Okay.
Sure.
Can you elaborate slightly on the, you said you refinanced, or what happened with the Long Meadow High School, the loan was changed?
Yeah, it's almost like refinancing your house. We went out and we refinanced the first loan that we took out on the high school.
How long was the first loan?
The first loan went two thousand, through two thousand and forty-one, and there was about twenty million dollars worth of principal that we refinanced.
How much thirty?
Twenty thou, twenty, sorry, twenty million, twenty million dollars worth of principal that we refinanced.
And it saves us a hundred and forty-five a year?
It's basically going to come out to a hundred and forty-five. I believe in FY nineteen, the actual amount is eighty-five. Thereafter, it's about a hundred and forty-five thousand a year through the life of the bond.
And, and any other terms that's changed besides that, is the, is the length of the?
No, the, the length of time actually stayed the same.
Oh, okay.
It was basically the interest rate, the amount of interest that we'd be paying on that, that made up that difference.
So that's a win-win, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Paul?
Yes.
You might want to just point out, Jessica, that, that there's a cost for the refinancing, that we have that double payment this, the next fiscal year?
Well, well, there is a, there is a cost in FY eighteen. You'll notice that we, when we go to the special town meeting in November, there's a, there's a warrant article for sixty-five thousand dollars, and it's for added interest. People may say, well, how do we get added interest if the interest rate is going down? The interest payments were normally made in August and in February, and we made the August payment on the old interest rate. And when we refinanced, and, and that August payment covered, let's say, February of the prior fiscal year right through July of the current fiscal year, so we had the six months prior covered. The, the semi-annual interest payments were changed to February, I'm sorry, they were changed to December and June. So we're going to have another interest payment, three, about three months' worth of interest paid in December first, and then we'll have a six-month interest paid in, on June first. So roughly for fiscal year eighteen, we have about fifteen months' worth of interest to pay, as opposed to the twelve months that we normally would have had, under, if had we just kept the refinancing as is. So that's the reason for that added money in FY eighteen.
So does the sixty-five thousand include all the costs to refinance? Is that what Mark's saying? I don't understand what portion of that includes the, I understand what you're saying, and then there's part of that is?
That's exactly what he's asking. Essentially, this year we have to make three interest, three loan payments on the high school instead of two, but long-term, it saves the town big, big money, but in the short, you know, you got to just change the terms, like Paul said, to December and June instead of August and February.
Okay, okay.
And they weren't penalties, no, sorry, they weren't penalties.
No, no, no.
It's just, it's just the timing of the interest, like I said.
Timing when we refinance, it's still a real good deal.
We're paying fifteen, sixteen months' worth of interest in FY eighteen as opposed to the normal twelve. That's what it really amounts to.
There was a mention about the split tax rate. Need to mention that regardless of what we do, the, the figures stay the same.
Figures stay the same. Again, it's really the assessed, the amount of, of the assessed value that is looked at. It can't be that two point five percent, which equates to a twenty-five dollar tax rate, but that is on a single rate. We can split that up any which way you want, but it's still going to come back to a, a single rate that the DOR looks at.
It still stays the same.
Yep. As I mentioned earlier, I did include increases in the, the state aid number. I've looked at a historical trend, we roughly get about two percent amount in increase every year. So we're building that into the budget right away instead of waiting to afterwards. And I'm looking at the estimated receipts or the local receipts, as they're identified here. I've also put in a two percent increase to allow for that, that's roughly a hundred thousand dollars. We did not use any reserves in FY eighteen to balance our budget. We're not using any reserves projected right now in nineteen, so there's no change in that number. The, the first MGM money comes in, in supposedly in FY nineteen when they open their doors. That first payment is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That amount right now in this projection is earmarked in debt service. The main purposes of that, in that surrounding community agreement, was to take care of the Long Meadow Street, Converse Street areas, as far as traffic was concerned, public health and, and public safety. We are looking to do engineering work on certain intersections, floors, going in Long Meadow Street, Long Meadow Street and Converse, and Converse and Laurel. And once that engineering work is done, it will be costly if there are improvements to be made, and that money currently, right now, is set aside in the bonding part, and it's not really built into the operation, I'll call it the discretionary spending that the, the town and the schools would normally have. We take it, so there's a small decrease in what's known as the bond premium amortization, but overall, I'm looking at an increase in revenues of one point five eight three million dollars. Now, on the expenditure side of the equation, I've included a, a, a three percent estimate in school salaries as well as town salaries going up. I know you folks will be dealing with collective bargaining, or should the school committee be dealing with, with collective bargaining coming up for FY nineteen? The town is still under contract for FY nineteen. Roughly, it would entail about a one point seven five to two percent coal is the estimate, and also the step increases would be included. These are roughly historical numbers of what we've been bargaining for in, in the past.
These are both three percent, school and non-school?
The school and then town, yes, and the, a non-school, right. So they're, they're both three percent. You'll see those numbers, anticipating salaries to increase, eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for the schools, two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for the non-school departments. Health insurance, kind of, kind of a wild card. I've, I've been, I've put into the budget, as I normally have historically, a seven and a half percent increase in the, in the Scantic Valley premiums. Scantic Valley has been subsidizing the rates that come back to the town for the last number of years. Their fund balances have been going down. It's not to say that they still do not have a fund balance, they still do have a fund balance that is available, but we just don't know where that trend is going at this point in time. A lot of it's driven by prescription drugs, and they are talking about doing some, some work in between to try to mitigate any increase, but it just, it's very hard to tell what it's going to be nine months from now. So there is that money set aside. Hampton County Regional Retirement Board, their actuarial study has an increase of eight percent for the town of Long Meadow going up into the short-term future. That eight percent is roughly going to cost the town two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. I'm anticipating increase in our liability insurance, whether it's the workers' comp piece of it or whether it's property, police and fire I O D, that amount roughly comes to only about thirty-five thousand dollars. The next one is Medicare, a fifteen thousand dollar increase. With the increases in salaries, the town matches for the Medicare expenses one point four five percent, so I need to build up that budget slightly. Our OPEB contribution, I am projected to increase a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. This is in accordance with the Select Board's policy. In FY eighteen, they retained a point seven five percent of the property taxes that would go into the OPEB trust fund that we currently have, but their policy all, also states that it would go up a quarter of a percent annually if affordable. So right now, I'm letting you know that it is built into the budget assumptions as an additional a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar cost to the town. Debt service, again, there's a lot of moving parts there, but I'm anticipating an increase of seventy-two thousand dollars in debt service. Again, the main driver of that is going to be the money from the MGM money that is being set aside for long-term bonding, should we need to do work at those sites that I recited earlier, those intersections. Capital contribution is going up two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Again, that is in accordance with the Select Board policy. In FY eighteen, the amount was two point seven five of the general fund revenues, and it is bumping, it is also bumped up a quarter of a percent to three percent in FY nineteen, three percent of the general fund revenues, and again, that increase would be two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So when we compare all the increases to all the, to all the estimated uses, we're left with a deficit of five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars projected at this point in time. It's not anything unusual for us to start in this position, as I said, but I will say again, I am a little more aggressive and less conservative this year with these estimates than I have been in the past. Finally, on the very last page.
I have a question on this list here. The thirty-five thousand dollar increase for liability insurance. Now, is that due to, this town, you know, like being sued or something like that?
No, it is, well, it, to some degree, yes. If we're, if we have an MCAT case as an example, whether we win or lose, we still have to go through, put it together, our case. It's going to drive up, you know, dealing with, with, with the legal team that assists us through, through our insurance. Just the use of that is going to drive up our premium. Again, we could go through the case and win it, but still incur ten thousand dollars worth of legal bills. A lot of this is being driven, right now, we are not doing well in the workers' comp aspect of our insurance. If anybody's familiar with that, we have an experience modification that is over one. When we have an experience modification over one, we then get into a penalty situation where we get additional surcharges, and right now, we've had some, some bad years over the last three or four years, and again, our experience modification is over one. I do not anticipate it going down in FY nineteen. Basically, that experience mod is a look back of the three-year history, with the, you know, one year will always be dropped, one year will always be picked up, but there is, there is nothing to say that we're doing any better last year than we were four years ago, per se.
Okay, and does, would our liability costs ever go down? I mean, is that, you know, if we've started having better years?
Our liability would go down if we started having better years in certain types of coverages. You know, the, the other thing that will also increase this is the increase in values too. You know, five years ago, I don't even know how many years this high school has been open now, but let's say ten years ago, the value of that old high school might have been thirty million dollars. Once we redid it, it was seventy-eight million dollars. So as we put up a new DPW, there's going to be an offset, there's going to be, you know, we're going to be insuring that. All those little things that we have, that increase in value, increase in replacement costs, types of things, there is more, there is more, there's a higher cost to those higher, we have higher coverages in the property.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Cell phone. Yes, Mark?
Paul, just, just a question about free cash. You know, every year, we have free cash, it ranges from, you know, you know better than I do, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, to the years we get Scantic Valley refunds and things like that, and unusual stuff can be up to a million dollars. Is there a way, any way of building that into the budget in such a way that, one, we don't overtax our residents, but more importantly, we really use it to push out the, the, hitting the levy limit date of Prop two and a half? I mean, this past year, I know there were some unusual things, but we had a lot of money that we taxed and didn't use, and yet we put together what we thought was a real tight budget, you know, a year ago, this time.
Yeah. Using free cash will not impact that Proposition Two and a Half projection.
No, I'm talking about anticipating free cash when you put together the budget.
If, if and when we do potentially hit that levy limit, if we did have free cash, I mean, we could certainly drop the amount that we needed to raise through taxation, and we could do that every year, but to build it into the budget would be, I, I, my recommendation would be not to build it into the budget, and if you wanted to give relief to the taxpayers in the fall town meeting to utilize, to utilize your certified free cash at that point in time to give them, to give them relief, but not necessarily to build in the budget, because it's unpredictable. I mean, just, I, I mean, historically, yes, we've had anywhere from three hundred and seventy-five thousand, and it's, you know, we're in the three million, sorry, the three hundred and seventy-five thousand to a million dollar range, but, you know, unless you're going to keep it at a small number, I think you're, you're gambling pretty much.
Department, I missed, is the new construction that's going on in it toward East Long Meadow? Did I miss that?
You know, I, I kept it completely out of here, because we are also expected to do road and traffic improvement there, and, and the way that that was, was presented to the town as a district incentive, district incentive financing, district improvement financing, is basically the incremental revenue is going to be used initially to take care of that. So at some point in time, we will see some type of revenue coming in that will enhance this, but initially, right now, I've left it completely out, so not to, not to guess at it.
Okay.
If I could build on that one further, in terms of, it would be a factor in the town's assessed valuation?
But not for a couple of years.
Okay. At least I didn't miss it.
No.
Paul, can you two, can we just go back briefly? You said, I just want to make sure I'm clear, for OPEB and capital, those are the only two that are per Select Board policy?
Yes, they have certain percentages within their policy that we've established, and part of their policy also recites an increase annually of a quarter of a percent when affordable.
Oh, increased annually? Oh, increased annually, a quarter of a percent.
So in FY nineteen, I do have a quarter of a percent increase built into that, Jess.
When, when affordable. But you guys and your assumptions built it in regardless?
Yes, it is built into the assumptions.
Okay, I just wanted that to be clear. So that's a total of a hundred and forty-six thousand.
Yeah.
What are, what are our current efficiencies in?
Yeah.
Paul and O P E B?
Well, you know, capital, you would know better than I, in all honesty. But I can tell you in O P E B, we probably, we have a trust fund that might have two million dollars in it. And we have a liability of twenty-seven million. So, you know, in, in the capital, you know, again, you can look at it many different ways. We're talking about middle schools.
To say for a hundred and fifty million.
I would, Richard, I would, I would offer that we could probably spend double what we spent every year. And still, yeah.
Quadruple.
And still have, still people unsatisfied with their roads and sidewalks.
I think I originally had a figure that said we should be spending on our capital somewhere to two to twenty million dollars a year. If we were to, as the national standards advise. And right now, we're spending like one tenth to one percent on our, on our actual inventory. So we're, we are.
We are way, we are way behind.
We are so far down, it's scary. And we're, we're trying to make improvements.
And we will have an update to that O P E B liability probably in the spring. But right now, again, we're twenty-five million in hold, just with that. You know, there's also a retirement liability that is on a funding schedule to be paid off by two thousand and thirty-six or thirty-seven. Those numbers are, yeah, that, that, that increase is built into that assessment at this point in time. Anyway, that five hundred and sixty-three thousand is an estimated deficit. If you go on to the last page, I kind of break this down into, into a couple different methodologies of how to look at this. I, I, I tried to define some of this additional revenue and the, and the uses as being discretionary or non-discretionary. You know, I don't think there's any argument that we're going to have to pay the health insurance increase. Is there an argument about the pension assessment we're going to get, the liability insurance, the employees retiree benefits when it comes to, I think that was the Medicare amount and the debt service? There's really no argument that we're going to have to pay those. And that would leave us in that first column with available discretionary uses of eight hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. If we look at the column on the left, the differences are if we identify the capital contribution and the O P E B contribution as discretionary or not. Or, you know, so we, we take, if we take, if we back those out from discretionary, we only have available five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And what I tried to do at the very bottom is whether it's the eight hundred and ninety-two in discretionary or the five hundred and forty-five in discretionary, I try to look at the, the percentage that the current budget is today, and this is on the very bottom, what the debt service is, the employee benefits are, and then what the, kind of the school budget and the non-school budget are that are remaining. And I take those, I gather a percentage of what they are. In FY eighteen, your, your general fund budget is thirty-three million, six hundred and sixty-nine or six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The non-school budget, twelve million, seven ninety-seven. Those are broken down into percentages. And if, just by simply those percentages, if we divided up those discretionary amounts that are left, whether they're on the right or the left, it kind of gives us a range of, of the amount that you might anticipate your FY two thousand and nineteen budget receiving. Again, they are only estimates. Not to say that they can't change, but it's just a simple allocation using current alloc, current allocation into the future.
Did you say last year it's over seventy-five percent allocate?
I think they were, I believe, I don't think I have last year's with me, but I thought it was relatively a close percent to seventy, seventy-two percent.
Seventy, seventy-two, and this year, you're projecting fifty-six point six?
No, well, the, I'm, I'm sorry, when I'm looking at seventy-two, I'm talking about what's on the, what's on the right-hand column.
Oh, okay, okay.
So there, there is a difference, that's all. Because I, I'm trying to take out that debt service employee benefit section. Because those are definitely non-discretionary.
Oh, I see, okay.
Paul, can I just, there's, the, the increase that you put in here for salaries and wages, those are all part of existing contracts? Or are there any contracts that have not yet been for FY nineteen?
The school committee's contracts end June, I'm sorry, August thirty-first, I believe.
Of two thousand and eighteen?
Two thousand and eighteen.
So that, that could have an impact upward or downward if it varies from your, from your assumptions, okay?
But all the town side contracts are good for FY nineteen at this point in time.
Paul, as a CFO, you have given us a document that said in six years, we could possibly hit our peak tax limit. As a CFO, what are your recommendations?
Well, it's very hard for this community. I think it's harder for this community, well, it's going to be hard to raise revenue and it's going to be hard to stop spending, too. You know, I think both things have to be looked at. This town did pass a water storm, a stormwater fee that once that M S four is finally in place, you know, we might have some relief there. Other things on the revenue side, folks may have to look at that are common amongst the Commonwealth folks are the trash fees. We are subsidizing your trash, we are subsidizing trash pickup in the enterprise fund for trash and recycling by almost nine hundred thousand dollars a year. Something has to give on the expenditure side. I mean, at some point in time, it's going to be increases in, in, it's going to be raises, it's going to be collars, or it's going to be bodies. That's the biggest driving factor, our salaries, when it comes to the expenditure side. I'm not quite sure where else you can go.
Do you have any doubt that we're going to hit the limit?
Hard, well, we are going to inch closer, we're, I mean, we're going to inch closer, Rich, annually. I, I just have no way of predicting what that housing market is going to be. That, that's what's going to be the deciding factor is the housing market.
Is there any energy that you're aware of on the state level to reduce or to increase this limit?
No.
No. But Paul, but the reason is because there's only six communities above twenty-two dollars. And so nobody's putting any pressure on the.
But there are, there are ten communities that have already had this issue of hitting twenty-five dollars. Springfield being one. They had a control board. Control board didn't do anything, that was probably their best opportunity to get something done. Holyoke has hit it. There's a number of other communities throughout the state that have already hit it. I'm sure that they've had the conversation with, with their legislative body about what can we do? Because I, you know, I, to me, they're, you know, the first thing they're going to look for is taxes. But we're not the first one to cross this path. Again, there's at least ten other communities that have hit it or are still there at this point in time. You know, I think Springfield has got, all got over the hump with recent development down there. But they were in, in this predicament, you know, four or five years ago.
Paul, Maury has a question.
I'm Maury Garrett, I'm the chairman of the finance committee. I, Paul, well, first, I want to thank Tom Chusa for inviting us to participate in the meeting and continuing the trend from last year, including the finance committee in these joint meetings. Paul, what I wanted to, to ask you, part of our role, we talk about is how we can speak to the members of the town about what the impact of some of these budgetary items are. And you began the, your presentation, your remarks, saying that we must raise taxes up to our capacity in order to maintain the standard of services that the, the town has grown accustomed to. That's, that's right. And if we continue to raise taxes up to our capacity, we, that is what is creating the situation where we inch closer to the limit. That, is that correct?
Yes.
So, once we reach the limit, we will no longer be able to provide the services that the town is accustomed to. The services will have to be decreased, they'll have to be cut. Is that accurate? Is that, is that the effect of reaching the limit?
I think what happened, if and when we do reach that magical number of twenty-five dollars, that very year, I, I would assume that there would be reductions in the capital contributions and other discretionary type, or I wouldn't say discretionary, but other areas where we're putting money aside. It will buy us twelve months. After that, something is going to have to give on the expenditure side. And it will, it will affect the way that the Long Meadow currently is. It will not be, it will not be the same. We can only implement so many things. And we can temporarily put it aside. But at some point, when it does happen, services are going to be cut in some which way, shape, or form. It's our only way out.
And this, and the, the deficit that you identified, that deficit is, is, it seems like be, it's a compounding deficit in the sense that doing what you said, removing the, the capital contributions, the select board's budgetary goals that they've set. By getting rid of those, you can address the deficit that year. But now you've gotten rid of them and the deficit will go up again a similar five hundred thousand dollars the following year. And you won't be able to cut those capital contributions anymore because they've already been cut, is that right?
That is absolutely right. You are, you're going to have to start the budget process from ground zero after that and really decide what are you going to contribute to capital, what services are needed, what services are wanted? And there will be some tough decisions to be made, but it will not be the same.
Yeah, I'd like to give a different scenario because I, I know the sky is falling, but the sky need not fall. And I agree, because I took some notes here, there, there are two, there are two ways to, to deal with this. And one is to cut your costs, move costs from tax-based to fees. And that's what, when Paul said things like, like trash, but there's also the Storm Sewer Utility Fund that we started and more and more things. We become fees and not taxes, but for town residents, the same thing, you know? But the other side of the coin is more revenue. And we, we just aren't good at discussing revenue. And, and, you know, for eight years now, I've been trying to look for sources of revenue and, and can't get people on, on the train, you know? And one thing we talk about is we need to develop sections of town that are undeveloped. You know, we have precious few plots in town, but we can do that. But very honestly, I think that each plot that you look at, whether it's the area around the water tower or Turner, each of those is a year or two, maybe, from tax revenue, right, Paul? I mean, you're not looking at Long, but what we're not thinking about is revenue like, you know, one of my favorite things, have the town put in a Wi-Fi system and make ten bucks a month off of everybody in town that you can escalate over time to eleven dollars a month or twelve dollars a month? People save money versus Comcast and students love it because they're on the same wireless system at home or at school. And, and it's more revenue for the town. But we've got to want to, and, and that's just one crazy idea. But we haven't really looked aggressively, and that's what it needs to be aggressively, at the revenue side of not just charge more for rent at the community house because our, our folks do that, but really look for potential new sources of, of revenue to town. There are some very good things other communities around the Commonwealth do. Some we can do, some we can't do, but we're not doing any of them.
Mark, I would add to your list, the regionalized services, because that's something that a lot of communities are doing successfully.
And, and we're working on that, but I think what we're finding is you'll get better services, but not necessarily cheaper services. I mean, you're still serving the same number of people and you're saying, you know, we're not going to, pardon me. We're, you know, we're not getting rid of our town manager and our department heads because we're regionalizing, you know, veteran services. We may eliminate a veteran service officer, and I'm not suggesting that, which the law doesn't even allow you to do necessarily. And, and that's not the, the answer. But, you know, are we going to regionalize the D P W? Now, that maybe is big-time money, or regionalize the fire department or the police department. But even then, if we, you know, theoretically combine the fire department with, with East Long Meadow, you're not going to get away with the same number of, of firefighters or police officers, so.
Regardless of what the actual, you know, numbers are, regionalizing has to be on the list. That's what I'm saying. It has to be on the list. It's worked for communities. We can't pretend that it's not part of our list here. And I, and thank you for making that list because I agree with you.
I mean, all those things will work, you know, to some degree and keep on postponing, hitting that magic number.
Well, we can't.
So every little bit would, every little bit helps.
I mean, when we're talking about, you know, serious, serious cuts, maybe we can't so much think about, oh, we, we want to do everything on our own as Long Meadow all the time. Maybe that's not the way things are going to always be. And I think on the horizon could be, you know, considering.
Again, there are small steps being taken. There's a regional dispatch unit being talked about right now that could save the town of Long Meadow some money. Again, there's no stormwater fee built into this whatsoever. So those small little things will push that off ever so slightly. The thing that I was remiss on, I know Tom and I had the conversation about circuit breaker. And he had a concern that potentially, in my estimate, I have FY nineteen being level from FY eighteen. And I know Tom had a concern that that may not hold true, which would then push additional costs into the general fund. And I don't know if you want to elaborate on that.
Yeah, I mean, you can see in our FY eighteen budget, we reduced expenses associated to special education by about four percent. Unfortunately, circuit breaker is one of those programs, you spend less, you receive less. So we're seeing about a seventy-five thousand reduction in how much we're receiving in FY eighteen compared to FY seventeen. Those reimbursements are a year behind, so what we're spending in FY eighteen, we'll see in nineteen's reimbursement amount. But I anticipate that number to continue to go down as we're looking to build internal capacity. And certain students are aging out from our responsibility. So it's just something we'll be keeping our eye on and monitoring for FY nineteen's budget.
Okay, Russ.
Yeah, so I just have a number of questions and comments. But Paul, I appreciate that you put in the two percent increases there. I think it gives us a kind of a better picture of what it might actually look like. The O P E B, what, what is the goal for the O P E B contribution? We're at point seven-five now. You want to go to one percent for FY nineteen? I can't remember if the board policy has kind of a cap of what percentage they want to get to.
It just says increase by.
Right, there, there is a goal of, of, once the, once the trust has so many millions of dollars in it, and I forget what the exact number is, that it would be re- re-looked at. But I think the ultimate goal is to meet fully the unfunded, the amount that we need to address the unfunded period over a period of years, which we're, would have to contribute an extra one point five million dollars. I know I'm only showing the increment amount, I think the actual amount will be closer to five hundred thousand. So we're still a million dollars behind what a funding schedule would require us to get on target to fund that over a twenty or a thirty-year period.
And how about capital contribution? Is that, does that have a capital, I mean, a maximum, or is that also just?
I think the max, uh, is four percent?
Four percent.
Five million, I think, when it got up to a certain million-dollar.
Yeah. Get off the top of my head, I'm not, I'm not sure, Russ. I mean, we could easily find those.
Yeah, O P E B is capped at five million. What's annually, it can only go up to two percent total, and it'll contribute, goes up a quarter every year till it's two percent. And then it stops at two percent, and then, uh, like, it's capped at five million. And if you give me a second, I can tell you capital.
Thank you.
And that's, that's just a fraction of our needs, but that was where we, we put the threshold in at this point.
So, that total number between those two is three forty-six, eight twenty-five, as Jess indicated. That would leave us two sixteen, one eighty-eight. And I'm not saying that that's what should happen. I'm just trying to point out that without the extra savings above what we're, we're saving right now, that would be the delta. Do you know what the town settlements were for the contracts? Was it two percent for police, fire?
It varied.
Okay, but is that ballpark?
The average is around two percent, sure.
Okay. And how about the insurance category here? It's going up seven and a half percent. Has the trust or the town discussed? Have you already moved the co-pays up to G I C levels, or is that?
We, we moved the co-pays up to the G I C level when, when the statute changed about four or five years ago.
Okay.
It is on the radar screen. I know since then, the G I C has increased their co-pays. It is on the radar screen to potent, to potentially make that. It is on the radar screen to potent, to potentially make that move in the future. They're also looking at a couple of other things too, Russ. You know, health, health savings accounts, things of that nature, some high deductible type of plans.
So I guess my last comment is I, you know, the trash fee said that would be $900,000 if we actually covered it fully. I think developing additional property, I mean, there's a lot of things we could do to kind of change this scenario probably fairly quickly. But I can't see any of those things happening until we're almost at $25 because nobody's going to vote for it. So I'm not sure, other than limping along the way we do now, I'm not sure how we actually solve this problem in these annual budget discussions. Because the problems, we're going to hit 25. I mean, I would agree with Richard on that, just mathematically. At some point, we're going to hit that number. I mean, it's unless something happens crazy with the real estate market where it never goes down again or never stays relatively flat. So I appreciated all the information that you gave us tonight.
Before we move on, can Stephen, did you find the second part of that?
On capital?
Yeah, thank you.
Excuse me, I, I have the floor. The, the point that you brought up, Russ, the largest drain that we have on our budget is personal services and benefits. There's no doubt about that. That, that is the drain. It's in tune of 80-some percent. Paul, what is it overall for our whole town?
FY18, it's about $38 million with $67 million totally expended or totally budgeted. So, you know, you're in the, in 70% range. You know, once you throw in the benefits, you're at 46, 47% or 46, 47 million of the 67 million.
And your mathematician takes that at what percentage?
Uh, that's about 70, 75%.
70, 75%. You, you have to understand that is, that's across the board. If you go into DPW, it's not as great, but if you go into schools, it's greater for the benefit. And we, we talk about, we talk about looking in the future and cutting expenditures on infrastructure. That's not the answer. There's not enough money in infrastructure. It, it's not there. We, we honestly know, as we've talked many times, our burden is our personal services in our community. That's the same as every community in America. It's never the infrastructure repairs that's burdened them down. That is a goose egg that's out there, a teen enormous goose egg, but that's not the burden. The burden we face today is our current labor agreements with BPW, schools, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and the escalating cost. If we can't somehow modify our expenditures, our increases there, there is not, there's no way you're going to stop this. It can't be stopped. You can cut all the cyclic, you can cut all the OPEV, you can cut everything you want. Eventually, unchanged labor and benefits will take the budget and totally put it under. There's no doubt about that. It will continue until it's dead. So you have to, you have to face the, the example. If, if you're going to, if you're going to approach a budget, you have to have X amount of dollars that's being put in to the future of our town. And the future of our town is not employees. The future of our town's infrastructure and keeping the water systems and the sewage systems going and the schools being built and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I caution anybody to, to think that they can come in and subtly say, well, we're going to slice this to make the pie better. That's not the equation that needs to be taken on. You have to look at the whole puzzle. And the whole puzzle is 80-some percent of our budget is labor. And if we don't, if we don't address the labor, I mean, Marie has brought this up many times. We have somehow, and the state is bringing it up now too, on a national, on the state level, they're starting to talk about the OPEV liability. They're starting to talk about a retirement system. They are truly recognizing the fact that in the next 10 to 15 years, this state is going to be in horrible shape. They already know it. They're, we were talking about it five years ago. Now they're finally catching on to the expression. It's coming and there's no, there's no way that you can get around it other than if you start to look at the whole picture, which includes looking at labor.
Well, Marie and then Jess and then Russ.
Jess had a question.
I was only trying to follow up with Stephen. He was providing some helpful information to us about the, the capital policy, the select board policy for capital contribution.
It calls for 25%, or sorry, a quarter percent increase each year, but it's not, the policy doesn't reference a cap.
Okay, so.
Jess, can I follow up a little point on that though?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I have it right, Stephen. So OPEV is capped at 5 million up to 2%?
Yeah, 2%.
And capital is a quarter percent each year?
Yeah. I just want to make sure when we talk about capital and like I said, the more tenured members of the school committee have heard this many times. When we talk about capital, I just want to make sure that we're not just talking about big trucks and pavement and sidewalks, your boilers that are going into your, to schools and the sprinkler systems that are being made at the elementary schools. Those are all out of that same pot of money. So I want to make sure the capital is a shared need amongst, across all town departments and school departments. So I just, because sometimes I think that gets kind of, we, we think we're talking about asphalt, but we really are talking about our facilities, our, you know, playground equipment. But playground equipment sometimes could be a capital item. So it's really for everything. So I just want to make sure that is clear.
No, I appreciate you clarifying that.
I think the only way we're going to get out of it is working together on this. And that is, we do have to look at regionalization of services. We've got to find a new way of delivering services than what we've been doing for the past 100 years. It can't just be bodies, whether we regionalize, whether we do a private-public partnership and we're just regionalizing of school systems, services and teachers and administrations. I mean, we've been reaching out in our regional select boards to find out how we can purchase together, how we can look at new projects together. Whether we talk, I know we've started to reach out and IT is doing something with East Long Meadow. And we're putting some of our IT in East Long Meadow. So I think we have to start really pushing the envelope in that way a little harder, even though it's easier to just do things the way we've always been doing it. We've got to find a new way of providing these services. And then we have to work together because even like the water tower property that, I've been on the board since 2011, we've been talking about developing the water tower, which is something we have to do as two boards together because you have a say in the water tower property. And so we started doing that about three or four years ago. And then there was a pushback, well, we want to actually see plans. So then one is the plans. So I think that's why these discussions are important, that we say, how much can we make off the water tower? That would not just be the sale right now, but then the flow of money that would go through. And that sort of planning is going to take one or two years down the road to, I mean, we're talking 20 acres. Is that how much is that the water tower? Yeah, some 17.8, 20?
In terms of developable, I don't think it's that much. But yeah, I mean, you could, you know.
So it, it is something that I think we have to start more multiple discussions on it. And when it comes to OPEV, it, it's not pretty, it's not fun. But if we were a public corporation, we probably would have been shut down. Only municipalities get away with that, which is make promises and then never put a money aside for it. And we're going to hit the wall. And it's not just us, it's all of Massachusetts. And if we expect Beacon Hill to bail us out, the legislation did not bail out the towns in Rhode Island. And that was about three or four years ago. And there's now firemen and policemen walking around with no pension and no social security. So I think we have to have a responsibility to sit. And this is only the first step. What are we going to do with this fund? Has Mark keeps saying, so when do we start paying out, you know? So I think these are discussions that start here, but we need to do as two groups because it's your employees as well as ours.
I just, on the, on the topic of what to do, to avoid hitting the ceiling or, you know, have we talked about at all a task force to just focus on that one issue and try to, you know, put some of these ideas into action somehow? Or, you know, have we as boards thought of that or? Because I, I think, you know, we all are, you know, have so much on our plate.
We are the task force.
Well, I'm thinking of, right, right. But if we could, you know, try to form a group that would focus on just that, you know, not necessarily made out of us, but one or two representatives from our team to work with some community members that might be able to help with that. It might get us, you know, to a better place quicker.
I just, I want to build on that because as we look at some of the recent developments that have expanded our, our tax base, you know, in terms of the expansion of shops. And now we have the buildings going up at the edge of the East Long Meadow border. You know, there's talk about the property that was a former synagogue at the end of Dwight Road and Williams. And then the property that was the old First Church or the, not the First Church, but the.
Scientists.
Yeah, Christian Scientist Church, you know? And so, you know, we look and say, okay, you know, we can see a pattern of development. But then what's going to come after that? And like Marie's saying, you know, if, if we're going to look at other properties in town, we should have a, like a plan of how things are going to fall as we move along. And that would be, you know, I know we do have a planning committee to, to address some of that. Marie?
Yeah, I like the task force idea, but it's not just the revenue. I mean, Stephen had a fabulous idea, which he brought up too when we had that legislative meeting, which is we have these insurance and this OPEV requirements that we're setting aside. Why is that put against our two and a half limit? If you really want the towns to start doing it, you can't put that in, in front of the two and a half limit. So I think there are all sorts of ideas that could be put on the table. And then the two committees really start pushing these ideas because it's not going to take, it's not going to be, I don't think that's a heavy lift for Beacon Hill because you're trying to make an offer of a choice without taking tax money away from the legislature. So I think it is some interesting ideas.
All right, Mark.
I guess, I, I'm just concerned that, you know, and maybe, you know, it's the old thing. You know, you, you save a million dollars, $100 at a time, and maybe that's what we need to do. But it's, it's a lot more work saving at $100 at a time than a million dollars at a time. And we say we've got to overcome the levy limit. You know, a $25,000 revenue income that we've got to spend a lot of effort to get $25,000, it goes up like that. And, and, you know, my personal annoyance is we're going to get some, hopefully, big time income from the Dwight Road development. And we've committed that for 20 years that the town doesn't see a dime of it as, as additional expenditures. Everybody needs to realize that for 20 years, the revenue from what you see going up down there is going to pay for revising the roads for the bonds. That was the commitment to the developer. So all this great development, and we're not seeing anything because we made a commitment that, that literally ties that money up. And, you know, 20 years from now, somebody's going to thank us when the commitment's over. But, you know, maybe somebody done it 20 years ago, it would have been great for us. But we got to be careful what, what we do because making commitments that don't benefit the town aren't very helpful.
We do get some cash flow.
Only if there's a second, second building.
Second building, but also some, after three or four or five years, it begins to cash flow a little bit.
And we, we may get a grant. We did apply for a grant offset some of that cost, which would change that, sorry.
So it isn't quite as big as you made it, painted the picture, Mark. But, but you're right, you know, we still are hoping that they put up a second building that then we would really generate some revenue from. Mark, for wrestling.
So I like the task force idea too. And I actually think it kind of came up in a finance committee that I was at last, well, the last one I attended. Because I, I think really to drill down into what we're actually going to do about this is not going to happen at the full board meetings. So it hasn't happened yet since I've been here at least. The other point I'd make, I guess two points is one, I agree on the employee side and it's most of our budget and that's what's causing part of the problem. But the town's settlements and our settlement, the last one, are above, you know, it's 1.1 million and we have 1.583 to deal with. So the settlements themselves, I mean, I think both sides, if we settle at 3% and we're only taking in two and a half or thereabouts, then that causes a problem. Not easily solved, but that's one of the big problems on this list.
Russ, the other big issue is, is a 2% settlement costs us 3%.
Yeah, and that's why we have 1.1 million and we have 1.5 to deal with. That causes the rest of the budget to have an issue. That said, the employees deserve raises and we have to figure out how to balance all these things. The other point I'd make is this year, there was what, 1 million roughly in free cash? We sent back 146,000. That money, what was, I mean, obviously that's the money that we budget a certain amount. We didn't spend roughly a million of it. Is there something in particular where that money came from on the town side that caused there to be, you know, a fair amount of money in free cash?
Again, there were turnbacks in, in almost every function of town to the tune of about $100,000. The general government returned about $100,000, public safety, DPW, you know, the schools returned back money and even I think the employee benefits. So, you know, when you take all those functions, you have $600,000 right there. The prior years, free cash wasn't fully expended. And I would have to say the motor vehicle excise came in once again over budget and a few other areas of local receipts came in over budget. That's what comprised that million dollars roughly.
Well, just before we go on, Mark, you know, you made a comment. For people watching, you said a 2% increase was really 3%. Could you just quickly explain that to the visitors?
There's steps. It's, it's that simple. There's, you know, everybody gets a 2% raise, but there are some people who get steps on top of their 2% raise or they get a step and the step went up 2%. I mean, so, you know, so isn't that? And there's things like longevity payments and there's, but essentially it's steps in longevity, but plus the 2% raise.
All right, thanks for clarifying that, Mark. Stephen and then, yeah.
I just, I want to kind of, Marie, thank you for applauding. But I want to build on that point because I think in terms of a task force, I just, you know, we do this every day. And so, you know, to get to the million, we do look for the $100 that's out there and we, and we grab it when we can every single time. Whether it's outsourcing a one job, one function, or writing a grant, looking for revenue, a cell tower. Is the cell tower going to move the needle and save our, you know, bacon for eternity? No, it's a small amount of money, but we still got it. I think the, to manage expectations, I think folks here need to realize we're not going to build our way out of it. I think we've made that kind of clear. And the tools that we really need to address this aren't in the possession of anyone in this room. And that's the issue that I think all municipalities in the Commonwealth face. And that's the good, the good news is this is a shared problem across municipalities across the state. And in a couple of months, we're going to be going to the MMA conference, the Massachusetts Municipal Association Conference. And we have sessions on all these things every single year, session on OPEV. We had a legislative breakfast with MMA and we went and talked to them about it. And I know that the legislature and Governor Baker are committed to working on healthcare cost control legislation or, you know, something to do. And I, I suggested that idea again about if, if the pressure is on the tax levy and there's a shared problem across all municipalities, just change how that's accounted for. Now, my suggestion was make a, make a community commit to cost controls, hire premium shares, maybe a higher deductible plan, some kind of way to control costs. And then you can earn some level of exemption from the two and a half cap. I mean, these are the types of things that are going to have to happen. Local option, fees and tax, local option gas taxes, well, Marie's talked about quite a bit. I mean, these are types of things that we're going to need. But we can have, you know, 100 task forces here locally. It's still at the legislative and federal levels that are really going to need to do this. And that's where I think all we can really do is get to the million 100 at a time. Because I think, and Russ, you know this, you know, people watching at home may not understand the nuances of collective bargaining and the, either the JLMs or the arbitration process in Massachusetts. They, they really may not understand what municipalities are up against when we, when we collectively bargain. You know, and as we look at the costs and the healthcare and the long term at OPEV, the flip side of that is we have really great people who teach our kids and patrol our streets and, and maintain our, you know, and, and run programs at the library. We have, we have a great set of services because we have great people doing them. And it is a very complicated thing. So it's much easier to say we need to reduce healthcare and pension OPEV. And like I said, Paul and I talk about different ways to do that almost daily, but it's extremely complicated. So I don't want people to think it's a lack of action or, or a lack of interest on our part. I think we all share the same desire. But I just want to make sure we're clear-eyed about what is our local ability to really move the needle on that in a meaningful way.
Okay, Russ?
I just want to make one thing clear. So everybody around here settling at 1 and a half or 2%. That's not unusual at all. That's pretty standard. I, I think the, the problem isn't so much, you know, the raises or the amounts. I mean, it's just obvious that the amount of money is not equaling out the way it should. I think the real problem is health insurance and pensions are creating a situation where you don't have enough money to give raises that you want to give or to, you know, save more for capital or OPEV. So realistically, the way to deal with that, I think, is to, I think really for all school committees and cities and towns, is to start to talk about that. committees and cities and towns, is to start to talk about that, the cost of insurance, not the co-pay, raising co-pays and all those things, I mean, those things are kind of a Band-Aid. The real issue is trying to get together to deal with health insurance costs and pension costs, because they are killing our budget. At the end of the day, the two of us can, you know, talk and debate and figure out whose fault it is, but the real issue is the health insurance costs and the pension costs. If we took that out, we wouldn't have a deficit at all. But every year it goes up, and now our health insurance is a huge percentage of our budget, when it used to be a very narrow one a couple decades ago. And that's really the biggest issue. It's not, it's not, the percentage is, everybody's doing the same thing in this area.
And I think, just in focus, you know, we look at folks who are teachers and, you know, firemen and so forth, and, and they don't make millions of dollars, they don't get these Goldman Sachs $300,000 bonus, you know, you know, so, you know, we kind of have the expectation, you know, when we go into a field as a teacher, as a social worker, as a fireman, that, you know, you're, you're going to get some benefits out of it. And, and so, you know, we can say, you know, we're still going to get quality people if we don't give them, you know, retirement or any kind of health insurance, but I don't think we will. I just think it won't happen.
Oh, I'm not saying get rid of them, I'm saying make it so that it's a reasonable cost. We need to do something about how expensive insurance is. We should still be able to offer employees the same type of plan we do now, but it should not cost as much as it does. And pensions are just totally out of control.
And the pensions, the pensions are, are one thing, it's, you know, a system based on wages. The healthcare costs, I just want to clarify your point, I'm sorry to interrupt, Maury, because it's, because this is what you started to say, Tom. When you, when, when Russ talks about the, the growth in cost to provide health insurance for employees, that delta, that amount of money more that we pay today than we did 15 or 20 years ago, that went to the health insurance system, not into the pockets of the employees. I want to make sure that people are clear about that. It, it went to insurance companies, lawyers and doctors, and pharmaceutical companies, not to teachers, firemen, DPW workers.
It's the system's fault, is creating a problem for all of us.
We'll go to Richard and then Maury, yeah.
I'm going to repeat myself, but I'm also going to tag in behind Russ. There's no doubt about it, the driving cost of our budget is benefits and personal services. CFO just said 72, it could be 80%. Some departments, it's likely 85, 87%. DPW is a little bit less, because they spend a lot more on supplies and materials. All the, any talk that you put into cutting capital and all these other very small percentage programs, it's, I guess it's red meat, but it means nothing. Until you stand at the table and understand that our budget is being driven and is being consequently drained by personal services and labor, the discussion can't even start, because that's where it's at, like just Russ said. That is where the costs are at. The other costs are just silly costs. Capital, $2 million out of a $65 million budget, come on, we, we can't even start to talk about it. The cost is in the benefits and the other one, until we, until we acknowledge that, until we set a direction that corrects that, and the state is thinking about it now, too. So we're timely if we start to get together and come up with a modified way of hiring. Why do we need to hire full-benefited employees? Federal government started in seasonals many years ago, they changed the retirement system, we've done nothing. We're still stuck in the same gear we were 15 years ago. And, and that particular gear is running us into, is running us into the gutter, because we're not going to survive. Russ is involved in labor relations as a lawyer with his different schools, he knows exactly what I'm saying, he knows exactly what the impact of this is. And that is the 800-pound gorilla that's in this room. And until we take it on and, and, and put it down to its knees and correct it, we're never going to get a path for, for improvement. It's impossible.
Thank you, Richard. Maury?
Some of what I was, wanted to ask about, Stephen talked a little bit about, and actually drew it into pretty sharp focus, that I've heard of many people in this room identify with great clarity what the issues are, the budgetary issues. But when I heard, and Russ has corrected, we did at the, in the finance committee, talk about a task force, and then there was, it seemed like there was some appetite in this room for the task force. I heard Russ say that this problem can't really be addressed by the full body of the, these two committees in this room. And I heard from Stephen some concern about the idea that this could be addressed by a task force. The question I have is, is there any consensus on these, on those, these two boards, who is responsible for coming up with, assuming that there can be a sustainable budget system vis a vis the levy limit? Something that does not place the people in this room in the position of each year fighting a fire, trying to come up with the million out of 100? If, assuming that that's possible, to come up with something sustainable, is there any consensus as to whose responsibility it is? Who, who is the, the person or persons that are responsible for actually finding that solution? If it can't be the full board, and it's not Stephen by himself, I mean, what is that? And that's my question, and it's to, to anyone who, who has the answer.
Tom, I'd like to try to answer that.
Good, because I saw Paul Musterz getting a little nervous.
But we saw this about four or five years ago. Maury, we saw this four or five years ago, when the state legislature allowed towns to one-time negotiate a change in healthcare systems with their employees. The plan was to share 50% of the first year's savings, right, Paul? And then after, I mean, but it literally took an act of legislature. And getting there took several years, because I watched it develop through the MMA, you know, and their legislative, the Mass Municipal Association, with legislative initiatives, getting it built up. But, you know, for us to, for example, you know, can we negotiate with our town unions that says, you know, in the private sector, there are very, very few defined benefits pension plans left anymore? They've almost all moved to defined contributions, right? You know, a defined benefit plan is extraordinarily difficult. I'm hiring somebody at age 22, 24, 26, and promising to pay them some benefit in 40 years or 35 years, then they retire, based on a salary they may have in 35 years, and a percentage of that, how much do I put away today to do that, as opposed to, I'm going to put away 1% or 2% or whatever percent of your salary? I'm not sure we're allowed to do that, Maury, so you say, is that our answer? But certainly, major American for-profit corporations have all identified that, that defined contribution plans resolve much of that issue. I mean, that's just two issues. So healthcare, we can't do, pension plans, we can't do, certainly our public safety, you know, retire, you know, public safety has a different package, our police and firefighters, because of the risk, because of the nature of their business, and I'm not arguing, you get it, they get to retire at a younger age with less years of service, with a higher percentage of their final year's salary. That's not because we negotiated that, that's because it's negotiated on a statewide level. So, you know, for us, we can sit down all we want to as a group and decide all the things we need to do, but ultimately, we've got to take our, our needs to the state legislature and, and join in those other towns and cities that are, have the same issues, and convince legislators that, yes, the unions in long, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are strong, and yes, they're doing that, but if we could do it four or five years ago on healthcare, it can't be done. And they're, they're, it's not that they're not working on it, it's just, it's literally the, the journey of a million miles, and they're, they're on step 22. But I, I want to say one other thing, though, for this board, because I'm, I think I've been on our boards the longest of anybody here. I can go back to 2008, and I was sitting in a select board meeting, and it was not a public meeting at the time, and the select board's heard me say this before, but we looked ahead three years, and we said, 2010's going to be a nightmare of a year. We need some relief in that year, and we directed the town manager that, when you go through the next round of, of contracts, we need 0% raises in the third year. And we paid a little bit upfront, but if you go back now and look, there was a year in town, Paul, I don't, it wasn't 2010, it was like 2012 or 13, so, we're, across the board on the town side, we had 0% raises. You know, that's something we can do in terms of how we negotiate, how we selectively negotiate. Now, I'm not saying that we do that, but there are things that, you know, since, in the last five or six years, we've never had the kind of thing where, where the school committee and the select board get together and say, you know, what is our joint negotiating policy? It's always been the school committee's going to do their thing, and the, and the town side's going to do their thing, and we're just kind of independently, but, but, you know, it really does make a difference, because even if we don't say, look, zeros are tough to do, but say, look, the schools are going to be here, and the town's going to be here, and we're going to kind of do this, so that we're never hit with big, huge increases in any given year, we, we've got to, that we can do. So, Maury, so the, the answer to your question is, some of those big things, we got to look to Boston, and we got to get, you know, Brian Ash and Eric Lesser involved, and we got to be positive what we're doing about it and push behind that, but we're also not doing some of the smaller things that we can do.
Okay, Russ?
So I just wanted to make it clear that I was just asking what the raises were on the town side. I think we're probably going way too far down the road of negotiations, but I don't think, I guess at the end of the day, to make my point really clear, I don't think that, I don't think it's the unions or the power of the unions or the raises necessarily. I think what it is, is health insurance costs too much. That is the problem. Every single one of the places I work at know that. That is what is killing our budgets. So, to fix that, in my opinion, is not to change the, I mean, the plans have been changed, so that, you know, people have deductibles now, co-pays are more, they're not the $5 co-pays you used to have. I mean, almost everybody's changed that. So at this point, how, how far are you going to go with that? Are you going to have $20,000 deductibles or $4,000 like I have? An average person can't do that, because if you get sick, you're going to have a problem. So at the end of the day, I think what really needs to happen is, if we're going to do anything with the legislature, or, you know, try to band together, we should band together on the cost of insurance. That is the biggest problem, nobody wants to do that, that's why the law passed where it says we can change co-pays and deductibles, but that's a Band-Aid, to hide the real problem, which is, insurance costs too much. So I think at the end of the day, if we're going to talk to our colleagues in other places, let's do that on that issue and try to fix the insurance cost. We'd take everybody in the state doing it together, and then it would take other states doing it, but a discussion about, well, let's give a little bit less in raises, or give a little bit less to the employees on the insurance side, I just don't see that as the long-term answer. I think the long-term answer is, we got to deal with insurance costs.
All right, Russ, thanks for those comments.
I was just going to say, this can't be a problem that's unique here, just, just to our town. This has to be going on everywhere. Why are we even at the, we all, I mean, are there other services that we can tap into? How are they doing it at other, how are they keeping their?
Very few towns are pushing $25, I mean, eastern Massachusetts, just so everybody knows the facts, we have the highest tax rate in the Commonwealth, we are 41st in average tax bill, okay? So, you know, you put any of our houses in Wellesley or Newton or something like that, your tax bill is going to be a lot, a lot higher, but your tax, your house is also going to be worth two or three or four times as much. And, but our, so, our tax rate is, is the highest in the Commonwealth, you know, and, and that's why we're fighting this, where you go to, you know, the eastern part of the state, and they say, yeah, it's important, but we're okay with the 2%, 2.5% increase a year, and we're nowhere near, there are, there are $11.75 tax rates.
But I was not suggesting that we go to other towns for answers, I'm saying there's other corporations, other businesses who are trying to get their healthcare costs down as well. This has got to be going on all over.
If you watch the national news, it's not going very well. And that's, and I'm only, I'm only half kidding, the, the short of it is, they, they've been at this for a decade now, and it's, healthcare has become more of a political football than anything else, and that's what, what it seems like, the federal government doesn't really seem, either don't realize or aren't really concerned about, is ramifications on the ground here at the local level. But I, but I, as I said before, that's where the solutions to the ultimate issue of healthcare costs reside.
I can just say, from being in the healthcare field, and, you know, my family, I mean, there are things that are going on to cut down healthcare costs, even in healthcare.
Right.
Whether it's an HSA, or whether it's, you know, seeing certain providers, or, you know, whatever, I mean, this is not a problem unique to our town.
Marie, and then, we'll go, sorry.
I think you're correct, I think that Scantic Valley's trying to work on those. I think the task force, get more involved, the, the school committee gets more involved in what they're trying to do there, because a lot of the people that are on these health plans are on the school side. I think the task force, I know, is not going to step on the foot of our professional staff, I think probably would be heading towards legislative and also understanding of where the costs are coming from. Right now, I heard Medicaid is 44% of the Massachusetts budget, budget. I was just asking for numbers from Paul on how far we're growing into the budget. Scantic Valley's done pretty well, but there's more they can do that's on the table, and I think it needs to have the political will, and that's why multiple groups working on it can show the political will of that. And our legislative people aren't going to stick their necks out on pension. They say, oh, we won't get reelected if we really try to make these changes. Well, we have to let them know, they won't get reelected unless they do make these changes, they have to make the tough decisions. And as you said, it's a lot of other towns that are dealing with this, if we really, as a group, start saying, all right, you do need to make these changes on the pension or the healthcare, and it might be minor things to us, maybe it's increasing just a small amount that is now contributed by the retirees. Maybe it's allowing them to, which is, is an insane thing that's driving me nuts, someone will move to Florida, and they have to still have a Massachusetts health insurance in their retiree. And some of our retirees are 55, and these insurances are insanely expensive to the town as well as to them, because there's no law out there to protect that. So if we had a group together that really started nibbling on these edges and saying, these things are important, we're not going to wait for the massive reform bills, we need these bills taken care of now. So I think the task force has value, and as an advocate, and also for us to start to understand the details that can make the changes.
Okay, Beth and Stephanie, you guys, I saw you both at the same time. You decided who goes first.
Since we're talking about task forces, and I, I do agree with that, and I, I will say that for many, many years living in town, I, I have felt as a resident that these boards were working independently, and I'm, I'm very hopeful and encouraged by what I've seen in just the last three to four years, as far as coming together and having these conversations, which really are so important and critical. And like you said, it's all of us, we, whether there's a specific task, task force made up of four or five, it really ultimately is, is going to happen when we're all on the same page and having these really constructive conversations. But in terms of task forces, I just wanted to ask while, while we are in the room, we did, I know Mark had come to our August meeting, and we talked about a task force for the Hampden County Retirement Board, and it looks like historically, we do fund that at 8%. I'd like to know where we are in that process, like what is going on with that right now, as far as, okay, because we want to talk about a task force, but how, how, you know, we already are maybe looking at something there, and that is kind of nibbling at our budget, and I'm wondering how we can constructively deal with Hampden County Retirement Boards, so that we are seeing some, some better results from them, I guess.
Again, I'm not part of the task force, but not necessarily the Hampden County Retirement Boards, the system and the statutes that are, that are driving a lot of this. They're setting up the, the retirement ages, they're setting up the creditable service, the, you know, the 80%, so on and so forth, all that's by statute. So I think it, it's a broader type of aspect, as opposed to more of a regional one. But again, and as far as the task force is concerned, I can't answer about the task force.
I, I was just wondering, because when we do start talking about putting together a task force, I'm wondering, how effective is that going to be if we start going, you know, down the list and making a task force for this and this and this?
Right, but again, that's going to be geared more at, at the legislative level for any kind of relief there also.
Thank you, Paul.
Just based on what I've heard, I'm kind of seeing three different categories, you kind of have the one where you're looking at change and changing the insurance and, and the pension and the problems that exist between those two, and then I'm seeing this kind of proactive, progressive approach of looking regionally, and how can we be more efficient in, in working with surrounding communities? And then there's this third pocket of where I see kind of the preservation, and making sure we're preserving the high quality of our schools and what our town is. And, and part of that, I just wanted to, to mention, is also the preservation of the town and the space that we have, including Route 5, and, and I know And, and I know that that's coming down the pike and, and revamping Route 5 and making sure that that falls within the preservation of our town when we are going to be hit with a lot more traffic from the buildup of the surrounding towns that have to pass through Route 5. But keeping in mind that we have schools and children that go through there and that's going to be a big thing when you look at home values. And that was another thing I heard, that home values and the tax that comes from that to the town is the biggest form of revenue that we have. And so that we have to think about that preservation of town and what it means to be in Long Meadow and what brings people here. And that's both the sidewalks and the ease of walking and, and the quality of the schools. So, when you think of Route 5 and, and kind of revamping what that looks like, I just hope that we continue the discussion together to make sure that the safety of the kids traveling to center school and everything that everyone loves about the town stays there because that will impact those home values in, in the school. So, I kind of see those three categories and I think that it's important that we continue the conversation on all three of those fronts.
All right. Well, we haven't, we haven't heard from, you're the only person that's saying. Please, this year, what do you take as a lesson in all of this?
Just in taking this in and I'm still very much a newbie, but I, I think a task force is necessary because we can all sit here and say, yes, we need legislative change, we need to talk to Eric Lesser, we need to talk to Brian Ash, but if we don't have people motivating them and standing up and making noise, then the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And I think that we really do, I think it's important that we, that we create a task force and continue the discussion. But I have to jump on Stephanie because sitting here and listening and hearing the talk of, you know, it's a services issue, it's, you know, the, the employment, I know that's the biggest piece of it, but it's what brings people to this town. I think people come to this town and they love the New England feel, they love the schools. So, yes, we do need to invest in our, our people and our services and that's a huge piece of it. And, and so I think a task force to start looking at the legislative issues, but also remembering what brings people to Long Meadow, I think it's important.
Task force, when someone said, who would make up the task force? So, I, do we need to stay within the confines of school committee and select? Do we open it up to community members? I mean, when we have redistricting, we had, we had town members, we had, I mean, I can't just, just thinking off the cuff, can, or even just in the long-range plan, you have town citizens, you have, I mean, the task force does, does it have to necessarily be just us or a couple of us from each?
All right. Well, we don't need to solve that tonight.
Right.
That's a good thing. We've gone around the horn. Is there any other questions for Paul Pesterzak in regards to his excellent presentation? I know you put a lot of time into getting all these numbers together and, you know, so if we, if there's nothing else, I believe we can, what?
The only thing I wanted to do was to recognize and thank two of my finance committee members, which we obviously and our newest member, Kaya.
Well, thank you for introducing her because the whole time I'm thinking, who is this woman?
Yes, we have the newest member of the finance committee and I believe the oldest serving member.
The ancient one.
Longest, thank you, longest serving, longest serving and the newest.
I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Maury.
Again, thank you all for having us and inviting us again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Is that a motion? Yes.
No, not a motion yet. I have a question. We have had a good discussion and normally I think best way to kill something is put it to committee, form a committee, it kills. A task force in this case is a little different in this city because this, this task force would actually be reaching to legislation. We'd be going all the way up. This is not an internal thing. This is an external thing. This is a coordination with other communities. And I would hate to see us leave this meeting with just the idea that we need a task force without somehow putting the next step in place for the formation of this task force or at least the groundwork for maybe these two committees, these two elected boards to go back and make recommendations for members to serve on this committee and that we coordinate after this meeting. I, I would like to see a punctuation put on that, Tom.
Okay. All right. So, so I have a question. You know, we talked about three, three, four topics here and Russ, I know you talked about healthcare and, you know, other people talked, but is the task force just, how do we get by, or how do we cope with the, the upcoming or potential two and a half cap? Or is, are we going to be a task force on, an issue task force, pensions or healthcare or something else? Because they're different people and different approaches.
Can I make a suggestion?
Well, I was just going to, we actually have resolutions that we're looking to approve for the MASC to take to legislation and that, to legislators, and that could be something that is done at this level if you're talking about health insurance. That's something that affects all of the school districts. So, if you're looking at one single issue, that's what's running through my mind is that this is something that we can propose and see if MASC will take up and then bring to the legislators. I think it would benefit all of the districts. So, for a concrete task that I'm thinking of, that's one.
That's actually exactly what I was going to say. I think, because I appreciate your comments, Beth, about working together the past few years. I think, you know, I know we've talked about joint resolutions in the past, but I think if the school committee and the select board have the exact same message and then you bring that to your associations, there's also a selectmen's association. And Long Meadow really bangs the drums at those meetings and say, locally, we are on the same page with our town and our school side, this should have meaning to everybody and then get compelled, those associations to raise the flag at the state level. That's how you really get the legislature to notice. Because to your point, Mark, are we going to be, is it going to be a task force that looks for the $100 or is it going to be a task force that goes to try and make the changes that are worth millions? And if the answer is, let's go make the changes that are worth millions, I agree with, I was actually going to say that, is the associations are the way to go.
Well, I see a task force as just starting your groundwork. You get your task force together, you come up with, you know, first you look at, okay, what is the problem? Problem is all the things we discussed, this is what's going to happen here, here, then. And then, then you identify, well, what's, what's causing, what's contributing greatest to that problem? It's X, Y, and Z. It's the pension, it's the health insurance, blah, blah, blah. Then you come up with, what are a couple of possible solutions? Increasing your revenue. So, you're looking at, you know, one category A is the properties that you can develop. Category B is decreasing your, you know, your health insurance, whatever. So, I see the task force as kind of just laying out what is the problem, just kind of, you know, making an outline, so to speak, and then say, okay, so what we can tackle is maybe selling off this synagogue that's sitting there empty or developing it, whatever, house or houses or whatever. So, then from, you know, from, from your plans, kind of like your long-range plan, committee coming together, making recommendations and then moving it on. Okay, well, now we are going to have a subcommittee that is developing those properties. Or now we're going to have a subcommittee that's going to work with legislation on the healthcare or whatever. It's going to, it's kind of, I see it as something that has to be broken down, but starting just with meeting your mission statement, what your goals are, what you're going to look at, what, and then just coming up with the bottom layer first and then moving on from there. That's what I see a task force as, not actually solving that problem right then.
Michelle. So, I think to answer the questions that are on the table right now and to address what Richard's asking, to try to form this or to, to take some action tonight, commit to taking some action tonight, what if you somehow gather from your board, you know, the goals of what you think this task force should be and I'll do that from my board and then together we can try to combine those and, and, you know, have a goal of maybe finishing the, you know, the makeup of the task force maybe by January 1st or something like that. Does that sound something like?
Earlier.
Sooner.
Maybe the finance committee could offer some input as well.
So, right, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to, I just think in terms of what this task force should be focusing on and that sort of thing, we might have to put our heads together outside of this meeting to accomplish that.
Either they get it done before Halloween or they can't have Halloween.
It's a hard line, Rachel.
It's 48 hours from now that we'd have to post, so I don't know that we could.
I wish to separate myself from the gentleman.
We've got to wrap these things up too, the long range, the charter.
I would just, I think that's a very good idea, but I'd like to say, I think the finance committee should also be one of the boards looking at that. And the other thing I'd like to say is, I completely agree with the two of you, so that was going to be something I was going to bring up.
Well, then you have to know what's right.
Yeah, this is never going to happen again. But the, the MASC, the Mass Municipal Association, I wouldn't want to wait for the task force because they're dealing with our local issues, but for the insurance issue, I would actually like to start that process right now, saying, insurance costs too much, it needs to be fixed. If we can get our boards to agree to that and get the whole, I mean, we can get everybody in the state to agree to that. Everybody I work with agrees to that, you know, on that point. And I think we talk to the unions and say the same thing to the unions because I'm sure the unions would join us in that march too, because if we could reduce how much it goes up every year, not through changing deductibles and co-pays, but changing the actual structure of healthcare, we would have money left to give people raises and not to lay off people. So, I think that's important, regardless of the task force, I think we need to do that right now. And if, if we could start it, I know there's tons of other places that agree with us. We just need to do it together. It can't be just Long Meadow standing out there by themselves.
All right. So, we'll talk more, we'll discuss this further as, and we will, Stephen, I know Stephen has to go. I know that the school board wants to continue their meeting. So, if I could have a motion to adjourn, I guess.
Some more.
Okay, and it's seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. All those in favor?
The school committee is staying open.
Okay, and they're going to continue. So, we're adjourning the section of the select board, the joint meeting, and thank you very much for watching.
And I think, let's take the five minutes recess for the school committee and we will be back. Thank you, and we are back in session. I'm going to start with the MASC annual business meeting because we need to vote on these today, tonight before we conclude. Let's begin with resolution one, movement of the chapter 70 funding enrollment date to March 15th. Does anyone need me to read the, okay, motion?
Can I just ask, Tom, what he thinks about that? Is that helpful to move the date to that?
Yeah, I don't necessarily know that it has a huge impact. I mean, there is some fluctuation throughout the year of students moving in that happened after October 1st, which is what they use now, so. Yeah. I think it had the minimal effect.
And it's still after, it's after the school committee would set its budget anyways.
Right.
I suppose it's before town meeting, but.
It would be. I just don't know that it, there'd be a big swing from the October reporting to the March reporting.
It's an improvement.
So, why don't we, I take a motion to approve the resolution number one or do you want to, why don't we go through all of them and ask questions and then maybe we can make them one approval? Okay. Does that, okay. Resolution two, reform of circuit breaker. Any questions related to that?
Can I ask, Tom?
Yes.
It made sense to me, but I'm wondering.
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't necessarily know that, I think one year we actually did hit the 125% threshold, but I can see how it could be problematic for larger districts and reaching that threshold and it becoming a larger liability for them before it kicks in. So, yes, I do agree with the proposal.
Anyone else, questions? Let's move to resolution three, litigation for fair school finance. Stephanie?
Can I, I'm going to ask Russ about, one thing I was, number four says, I mean, it says the reserves will be used to underwrite the cost of such litigation. It can be without a cap. Is that something that's concerning? And I wasn't really sure about this one.
Reserves of the MASC.
Right, it'd be from MASC, but I wasn't, did you have any, I'm wondering what your thoughts are on this.
I don't know, that one I thought was kind of.
A little bit.
Odd.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree, but I don't have, oh. It was about, you know, the litigation and I, I don't know. It had been turned down, but they're waiting to decide if they're going to move on it in the event that.
I mean, it basically just seems that we'd be authorizing MASC's counsel, I guess, to look and see if there's any chance of being successful in relitigating that issue of whether funding is sufficient for public schools. That's the gist of it.
That was when I was kind of, I, and then it wasn't supported, it wasn't, I guess, I don't know.
This was submitted by a school committee.
It was submitted, it wasn't sponsored by MASC and then I was kind of, wasn't really sure about that. So, I don't know what other people think on that one.
Framingham submitted all.
Worcester did, yeah, the beginning. Yeah.
But these were supported by all the committee, you know, the resolution.
Right, those people from there. So, do we support it because they supported it? I don't know.
I mean, it's MASC's money, so the reserves is what they're looking at using.
Yeah, but MASC is not sponsoring it.
Yeah, but they're, the resolution committee.
It's member districts.
It's not that they're, it's not necessarily that they're not, it was just submitted by Framingham, just like I want to submit that health insurance thing by Long Meadow, I guess.
Well, they, well, I guess, yeah, one was initiated and then they sponsored, but.
Yeah, number six.
Oh, does it?
Yeah, there's only one that they actually sponsored along with.
That's why I didn't, I don't know. I feel like I don't have enough.
Actually, it says it was initiated, but then sponsored by the MSC board of directors, which makes, which is actually different. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Because these other ones were actually submitted by the Framingham School Committee.
So, possibly that's a no, but.
Let's hold on.
Let's go through each one.
Yeah, okay. So.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
So, is it, do we know why this is being brought forth? Are they thinking about bringing another lawsuit based on like the Supreme Court legislation that just recently came out in March?
I think what they're, I think what they're saying is years ago you had McDuffie.
Right, and now we have the case that came out in March that changed the standards for special education, so.
Yeah, but I think this is about just general, is the state funding education appropriately so that everybody can have an adequate education? That was what McDuffie was about, so I think they're saying, let's relitigate McDuffie because what they, they said the second attempt at litigation was rejected, but did not rule out a willingness to hear a future case. So, I guess they're thinking maybe it's now is the time to litigate again and say, you're, you're still.
That's what, I guess that's what I was curious, like, is there a movement to litigate again and that's why they want this reserve fund to be able to try to litigate, litigate again?
It looks that way.
So, what's interesting to me is that it would authorize the board of directors from MASC to use those reserves of the association, which I guess if they, I mean, this is just a resolution they bring forward, but MASC could say, actually, no, we don't want to do that, you know, in the end, right?
Well, they could say there's no likelihood of success, which means they wouldn't pursue it.
Right, well, maybe it's a benign kind of resolution.
Right, and the possibility is to provide more funding for education.
And then MASC has a say in it anyway. So, that's what kind of threw me a little bit, that it wasn't them proposing it, but.
I'm not sure if this is a regular meeting, but if it is, like our normal motions, if the motion's made on the resolution, I don't know if you've been there before.
So, we haven't made any, that's, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm asking about theirs.
Okay.
If we could, if I'm there to vote and I can raise my hand and say, does MASC support this? And they say, yes, then I vote yes. If they say no, I vote no.
Yeah, well, it says, it says they're approved by the MASC board of directors, right on the first page.
That's what I thought, yes.
Where's the?
They're following resolutions.
Oh, you're right.
By the resolutions committee that are approved by MASC board of directors.
Thank you, Diane.
So, the other headings are just misleading.
Yeah, at the top.
So, why don't we vote the right, why don't we vote them all?
Yeah. Okay.
Are we okay? Are we okay on the discussion of Resolution Four for now? Okay, Resolution Five, use of federal funds. This was submitted by the MASC Board of Directors initially.
Hold on, did we talk about number four?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was three. Resolution Four, privatization of public education and the oversight of public schools, including small and regional districts. Anyone have any questions or discussion on that? Resolution Five, use of federal funds. Resolution Six, foundation budget. And Resolution Seven, Affordable Care Act and Medicaid. Someone wanna make a motion to accept the resolutions as stated in the.
I'm sorry, I hate, I'm.
I know, I have to put a motion to something.
On Resolution Number Four.
Okay, let's break them down by, by resolution then, how about that?
Okay.
Just to get through what we know we're, and then we'll house that. So why don't I take a motion on Resolution One?
I'll make a motion to approve as written the Resolution One.
Miss Shaw, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Why don't we just put a motion on the table to vote on these as a batch? And then if there's anything that's gonna be excluded, then we can just discuss, we can discuss, we can discuss excluding it and, and amend the, the motion. I think it's gonna be more expedient that way, if everyone's okay with that.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion, Diane, if you could just help me with the language. I moved that the school committee accepts the, uh, seven resolutions proposed by the MASC Board of Directors to be voted on in the affirmative at the, at, what's it called? The annual meeting, the 2017 annual meeting of the MASC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So now discussion.
So just if there's anything we wanna exclude.
Karen?
Just, on Resolution Four, I'm just a little uncomfortable with it, 'cause I feel like it bundles so many things together. Like, we're talking about vouchers, charter schools, and regional schools. So that makes me a little uncomfortable.
Okay.
But I feel like you s, you know, of course we support the protection of small and rural school districts, but I feel like vouchers and charter schools and all that are really hot-button issues that, I'm not, I don't know, I don't know how everybody feels about them, so I don't know that, as a school committee, we would wanna make that decision. Just throwing it out there.
Well, this says that, oh, okay.
It's basically saying that you wouldn't authorize state funds to subsidize tuition in private schools.
Right.
Except for students with disabilities.
Okay, right.
Special ed program.
Right.
So.
In response to the valid initiative.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense.
It's an odd resolution.
I, I just think it's just so, I don't know, they just put so much into one.
Mm-hmm. So am I hearing that we should leave, exclude this resolution from the motion that's on the table?
To bunch it together, is that what we're talking about, or to?
We're just saying, what, what do we wanna not, what do we wanna exclude from the batch? Karen has concerns about four, so do we wanna drop it from the batch?
I'd like to hear more about the concerns.
I think the whereas clauses are kind of bundling a lot of different things, but I guess when you look at what the actual resolution is, it's really not to use state or federal funds to subsidize tuition or cost of a private school.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, you're right.
And then they throw in the regional, the regional school districts at the end for some reason.
And the other, the, the second paragraph there further poses the alteration conversion of a school district beyond that permitted by law. So I think that must be getting at receivership issues and loss of local control. And I think the third paragraph is to oppose the sort of super-regionalization of school districts, which, you know, seems, I wouldn't say it's gaining momentum, but there's certainly talk of that, you know, where somehow the state would impose some type of.
Forced regional.
Higher level of regionalization.
Yeah.
Forced regionalization, that's a good phrase, yeah.
So. So I think overall that seems to make sense, Resolution Four. When you get rid of the whole, the rationale for why they're doing it, if you just look at what they're doing, it's seen that problematic.
Yeah.
It is tackling a lot, it's getting into two or three different issues.
Are there any other resolutions that anyone has, has any questions on?
Oh, Karen's all right with it.
You are?
I'm okay with it.
Is there any more discussion on any of the resolutions?
Seeing none.
Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote on accepting all of the resolutions. And having Russ vote on them on our behalf.
Thank you, Russ.
All those in favor? Post? None of those. Okay. There we go. I will now move back to the charter review feedback. The school committee will review the responses to the Google form, asking for feedback on the charter review, charter. So what we had done was, can, I asked people to submit what they would like to discuss as a board, to then endorse and send over from the entire school committee. And Karen submitted, I'll start with the first topic, term limits for school committee members. Well, that was one of the things that she wanted to discuss as a board. So I know, I have thought about this at times, whether or not we might want to put a term limit on, so that, let's say, maximum of nine years serving, or, or something like that. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
I asked.
Jess?
I did ask Glenn if anybody has term limits for school committees, and he said a few. But he's only aware of Newton with an eight-year limit on four consecutive terms. And in Newton, I guess it applies to all elected offices, not just the school committee. So it sounds like the minority.
It happens naturally here.
It does, it's true.
Nobody wants to stay on the committee forever.
It's hard to get people on the committee.
Such is true.
Reverse term limits, you have. The committee for.
Right, keep them alive.
Yeah, you have to stay on the committee for 10 years.
And three is long, a lot of places don't have.
Three is long, I think it should, it maybe should be two, but yeah.
I'll move on then to the next topic, delay of one month before new school committee members take office. And I know this has been tossed around a few times, does anyone want to, Stephanie?
I think the only concern I have with that is that the month delay wouldn't allow you to participate. And I think in order to kind of get in there, I think the book that hopefully is created to kind of guide people will help, but delaying it, I don't think it's gonna make it better. I think the book will, it's kind of, like I feel on LPVAC being new. Like, if I wasn't sitting there, you know, I've read everything, and if I wasn't sitting there, I wouldn't be able to, you know, I don't know, that's my thought. But you kind of have to get in there.
I know there, I know there are communities that do this, and I know one that gets elected in, that I've heard of, that gets elected in November but doesn't start till January. So I'm imagining there has to be an overlap there, where, actually, I'm certain there is. So their term doesn't begin until January 1. So if we, for example, had a September 1 start date.
We'd have to change our start date.
Right, but we would have, I'm neutral on this issue, I, if, I, I know other people feel strongly, and I could definitely support it. But I, logistically speaking, we could say the election is still in June, but the, um, the term doesn't start until, for example, September 1.
Or even July 1, I would say, you know, just to give some buffer to learning, you know, like, kind of figuring out what the role will entail before you're then asked to make decisions, to sit on boards.
That's true, because we're coming to end of, I see what you're saying, we're coming to end of year stuff when you come on, and that is hard. Yeah, that is the hard part, okay.
Yeah.
And I just wondered about if.
That's true.
Do you normally not meet in July, anyway? Because that, that seems like the ideal time. I mean, you know, we come in in June, mid-June, you might have one meeting left, and it is, that's very important, end of year. Closing, voting, whatever.
July was just warrants usually, and August, too, I mean, occasionally I had little things, but it was pretty.
But we already, we, we did start at the end of August, so I'm just saying, there may be a natural break if we use it correctly and plan correctly, that you're gonna have a natural break in July for the most part.
Yeah.
I mean, just this business of one day being elected the next day. I mean, just making decisions and having to have, run all your open meeting law and conflict of interest and all that. There's no way you can possibly be prepared.
Yeah.
So it's just a question of, do you wanna have a natural break? Finish up, finish up June with the old?
You're saying before the election, try to finish work up before the election?
No, so they would be elected, but they're.
Do you have to be sworn in right immediately following election? Can the, can the old members finish out that month?
Not based on the current charter, I think. So we would, this would be something that we'd be suggesting to change, 'cause I think the way that the charter is now, you begin your term the very next day, or the day, you know, the, at the moment that you're elected. You, you know, changing a guard, you don't get sworn in the next morning.
Can you get your meetings in for June prior to that? Or just finish with the first one prior to election?
I think that's tough, because there's so much that goes on at the end of the year. That would be, I don't know, Marty and Tom, you could speak to that, but I know we've had just a lot of business that has had to take place, you know, between the election and July 1, just because that's when turnbacks go, you know, there's just so much involved. That would be my, um, thought on that. Um, I don't know which, who had their hands up. I, I think it makes sense to align it with the fiscal year and just start it on July 1, because it gives the current board time to tie up all those loose ends at the end of June. And then, I think it was Russ that said, there were some minimum warrant things that we talked about in July and August. So you're participating in meetings in July and August, because I do feel like we did have, you know, some great communication going on over the summer. But if you just kind of keep it crisp and clean and simple with the July 1 fiscal year, it allows for that natural break, like Melanie said, and then you don't have to wait, I think too much of a lag time occurs if you wait until September 1. There's a lot of things that can productively get done over the summer.
Would we have had a quorum if we don't have those people and say, you know, we have?
No, no, they just got it until July.
So your term would continue until, you know, so.
Oh, keeping the other.
June 14th would be the election, but those positions would still remain, you know, the veteran members would be in office until July 1, and that's when the changeover would take place.
Would be like the presidential election.
Yeah, so we really have to, yeah, change it.
But it would be a short period of time where.
Yeah, change both, both, yeah, okay. So, okay.
Also, would, sorry.
No, no, I'm just thinking, I wasn't thinking both would, that the old ones would say.
Right.
If you kept the new, quorum depends on how many come in that year, whether or not you would have a majority. If it was one, only one new member versus three or four, right?
But everyone would stay on till July.
This would be just to change the starting time.
Right.
The only, the thing that would be beneficial, and I don't know if it would be allowable, just logistically, because of, you know, whether or not you're sworn in or you're officially part of the school committee, but to be able to do, like, all those trainings while, while you're, you know, in that interim period would be fantastic. I just don't know if it would be able to be covered, or if you could, like, retroactively cover it, you know, 'cause then you would have.
I think it would give, whether those trainings could happen or not, even if, even if they couldn't happen for some reason, which I think they could, but it would give Diane and I a chance to do our own orientation via the packet that we've been talking about.
Anybody else want to talk on this?
Well, I was just thinking, 'cause it's almost 10. On this whole list, is there anything that anybody on the committee really feels is really gotta change in the charter that all of us should vote on? So maybe this issue, but is there anything else that, there's a lot of things that we individually might want to change, but is there anything that somebody feels strongly about that it must be a committee vote to support a change in the charter? Just because if we walk through all of these, it's gonna take a while.
Yeah. I, I really, um, because I do not believe when there's an interim select board member that we have a vote in that. So I'm not sure why they have a vote in ours, so that is something I'm interested in. If that is in fact true, the select board, when they have someone appointed, we don't, we don't vote on that, am I right?
Right.
That's state law. That might be law, yeah.
So, just before we, I just wanna keep track, though, sorry. It sounded like we were all in consensus for that delay of a month, is that, did I, am I hearing that?
Two weeks.
Sorry, two weeks.
Till July 1.
Till July 1.
So then I think it needs to be worded, so it's clear that the old members stay on, not that it's just a delay for new.
June 30th is my thought, through June 30th.
Yeah.
So starting from January 1.
Yeah, okay. You, you just brought up the, we'll move on then to the appointment process for interim school committee members? That's the one that you're asking about.
I'm just curious, yes, as to, um, so the select board, they vote theirs, I'm not sure where it came from that they vote ours.
So does anyone just?
It's, it's this MGL section, it, because we don't have anything in our bylaws, it just refers to MGL, and we don't have anything in our charter, so it reverts, it refers to MGL, which gives the select board, I'm sorry I didn't send this to you guys before the meeting, but I'll just tell you, the right to oversee the process. But I reached out to the AG's office, the municipal unit, just this afternoon, to find out if the charter, in fact, we could make a suggestion where it would trump that, and, and she said, "Yes," that there's a provision, and I'll give it to you, it's section 20, I'm sorry, it's, um, the Home Rules Act 43B, section 20, um, which gives us the ability to enact a different process within the charter. So we could do this, and she gave me the example of Greenfield, which states, "Whenever a vacancy shall occur in the office of school committee member, the vacancy shall be filled by the remaining members of the school committee. Persons elected to fill a vacancy by the school committee shall serve only until the next regular election, which we already do, at which time the vacancy shall be filled by the voters, and the person chosen, chosen to fill such vacancy shall forthwith be sworn and shall serve for the remainder of the unexpired term of the vacated seat, which we already do. Persons serving as school committee members under this section shall not be entitled to have words, quote, candidate for reelection, printed against their names on the election ballot. In the event of an impasse, the president of the town council shall have the vote." So we would just need to figure out that little piece. But I really have felt strongly about this for a very long time, since the charter became, the charter didn't deal with it, and our bylaws don't deal with it, and so I, that's why I did all this research, because I think that we need to take our power back as a committee and be the ones who are appointing our members.
So she's saying special legislation, then, the home rule? You have a home rule petition, that's what that is.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, it just says that the provisions of any charter or charter amendment adopted pursuant to the provisions of this chapter shall be deemed consistent. Do you want me to pass it to you?
Yeah, but I, I would think.
You, you tell me what you think.
But anyway, I mean, we could recommend it, and they can figure out legally if we can do it.
I just wanted to have, I just wanted to have at least, I wanted to make sure what we were recommending was legitimate. So I wanted to do a little background work on it.
I guess I would just ask, do they serve in that same capacity with all boards? Like, a vacancy comes up on finance or. Like a vacancy comes up on finance or on another one of the committees? I guess my.
No, no.
Finance is, yeah.
Okay, or any other.
They're appointed by the select board, yeah.
I guess I would ask.
Yes, yes.
Um, so, I don't know, maybe just in the, their role as overseeing all the committees in town. Maybe they feel like they want to say, I don't know. But if we're the only ones, you know, it's not appropriate.
I know, yeah, there's a purposeful separation between the select board and the school committee. And it's always caught me as strange that they, um, the process for that involves, um, involves them, so.
Sounds like I'm hearing, Beth, do you want, have anything you want to add? Sounds like most of us are in support of, or not all of us are in support of that. Okay, so we'll forward that as recommended from us. Um, the addition of a school facilities manager. Anyone feel strongly about that? Please now. Uh, stipends evenly distributed or not at all among boards?
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Even if, because it's late, um, even if we don't have a, a vote or a consensus on the facilities manager, I was just wondering how people would feel about sending it not so much as an endorsement of the school committee, but as a question. Just is this something that they could look into, or do we not want to even open that door?
Well, we'd have to pay for it, I'll do that.
Do we, do we contribute towards the school, the facilities manager salary now, or is that just on their side?
It's on their side. I believe when they consolidated, they moved all of the funding out of the school budget to the DPW.
That might be a good idea, but it's gonna be a cost item, isn't it?
Yeah, and I had brought that up originally because it's been, it was a big deal when they, they initially, when the, you know, they enacted that. Um, we really haven't evaluated it. Maybe we could, if people felt like they wanted to talk about it, we could certainly do it at another meeting. Because it is kind of a big issue, and I know Tom has a lot of valuable information that he might want to share too, so he could always table it. If people want to talk about it at a future time.
Let's table it for now, just looking at the time. Stipends? Anyone feel strongly on the stipends, Karen?
Why is there a stipend for a select board and not for school committee?
Yeah, I don't know the history on that. Does anyone have an answer to that?
Not that I'm advocating.
Yep.
One way or another, I'm just curious how that came about.
It probably makes sense to not have anybody have one.
Yeah.
Yeah. We should have brought that up tonight.
Boards, boards often do.
Excuse me?
I've seen sometimes the board selectmen will get more than the school committee. But.
Now, I thought the school committee used to get a small stipend back a long time ago when my dad was on the school committee. But I, I think, um, I'm pretty sure that there was something. Uh, but I haven't dug it, dug it up. And currently the select board's twenty-five hundred. And they were also receiving, um, benefits up until a couple of years ago. I called the office just to confirm all that, so we had accurate information.
So that would be basically either equalize or eliminate, is the idea.
Yeah. Yeah. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, everyone's good.
Um, let's see. Shall I have to go? Um, Melanie, you had section three-three, add, conduct an annual performance evaluation.
Well, I guess I just didn't understand why that wasn't in there, because. Unless it's not necessary, if, if that's obvious, is it?
What's, what does that refer to, the?
Well, if you read what's there, it, it states that they. Well, I had, I'd have to go back to my original here. I think it's in here where it says, "Section three dash three C, define their duties, make rules concerning their tenure in office, and discharge them." I mean, maybe, maybe that could, performing.
In regard to us looking at administrators?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just didn't know what three-three is.
Yeah, yeah. But it lists, "Define their duties, make rules concerning their tenure in office, and discharge." So maybe an evaluation falls in there, meaning making rules concerning their tenure in office. I don't know, is it covered? Is it necessary? I don't know, I just noticed it wasn't in there.
No, that's a good point.
So that's in reference to officials that are appointed by the school committee, or is that what?
I believe it's a reference to you.
Oh, just, okay.
I believe.
Okay.
Which were required.
Doesn't it all fall under?
That's what it was.
Don't we have guidelines we have to follow?
Well, that's what, it may be somewhere else, Amy, coming in, I don't, is it somewhere else?
Requires us to do it, but it's, it's an interesting point that we have all the other things we do, and it doesn't list evaluation, but.
Yeah. It's possible that they weren't done when the charter was created, is that?
It was just updated in twenty oh four, right?
So then.
Two thousand and four, was that the last?
Yeah, I think it was four, four or five.
Do you know how long superintendent evaluations have been?
School committees have forever been required to evaluate superintendents.
Probably not on camera.
Right. Or if they're done now.
It wasn't.
Well, does anybody feel? Yeah, and maybe no one feels strong about it. I, not necessarily do I, I just noticed it wasn't in there.
It makes sense, I, um. So, um, okay, and I think that's.
I'm fine with that, that one too.
Okay. I think I have all of the information that I need. Oh, there was, which one did I miss?
This is Marty's.
That was.
Oh, sorry, thank you, separate paper. Okay, and, um, the memo from Marty on, as part of the charter review process, um, let's see. Do you want to just speak to this, Marty?
Yeah, well, the, the charter describes the terms and conditions on which, under which the school committee would hire or dismiss a superintendent. And so I'd say it, it might be contrary to law and it might be contrary to contracts. And I'm speaking generically, really. And I think as my understanding of mass general law, that the, the terms under which superintendents are hired and dismissed are dictated by law. And so, for example, I think the current charter says that superintendents would be hired with a five-person vote, maybe, or a, like a supermajority. And that, I don't think that's your practice. I think it's simply a majority. And then there's some language in there about, um, the votes that it would be required for dismissal. And it may or may not be, um, consistent with any contract you develop for a superintendent. And so, I think.
Ross?
Yeah, I think your contract says five, and the charter would dictate four votes.
Right.
So that's the difference I noticed, but, um. I, and not to deal with your contract, but just in general.
Yeah.
I would normally say it should be a majority vote for any contract because it's a majority rules of the committee or the board selectmen. On every issue pretty much, except for budget is two-thirds. So. I agree with you that it conflicts. I'm not sure, I disagree with the charter language itself conflicts with your contract, probably other contracts, I don't know if they all read that way. But that's the only dilemma for me, is I kind of, I, I agree more with the charter language than, than maybe the contracts in general, but.
How does that work if you have that discrepancy?
Right, which one?
Which one prevails?
I think that's the issue.
Contract.
You don't want it.
Yeah.
So can you just put in a line in the charter, like, leave it as is, but just add a line? In slotting conflict with the contract?
I'm surprised it's in there at all. I mean, it, it usurps the committee's authority to decide.
Well, and then there's law, right? So you have both the contract and then you have law surrounding it, am I right?
Yeah, but, I mean, it's legal to say, you could say it's a unanimous vote, um, to terminate or hire somebody potentially, but. I mean, normally I'd say the best thing is just do a majority vote for all decisions like that, but, um. But it is a valid point that the charter is limiting in some way, even though I agree with it. It's limiting the ability of the committee to do what they want. Because majority, a committee agrees to five or unanimous, then that's the majority's decision, so. The charter does limit that ability.
And what does mass law say?
Well, normally it's a majority vote, but that doesn't mean you can't do something more than that.
You just can't do anything less. Right?
And I think the charter says that you, your superintendent would have to be hired by a five-to-two vote, or by a, with, with five votes.
I have it here, I can read the paragraph.
Yeah.
Um, it says, "The school department shall be under the direct control of the superintendent of schools appointed by an affirmative vote of at least five members of the full school committee for a term of office and under such conditions of employment as provided for in a written contract and as further provided for in section three dash three B of the charter. Superintendent may be removed from office by an affirmative vote of a majority of all the school members on the school committee. Superintendent shall manage a school system consistent with general law and policies set up by the school committee. And the superintendent shall have those powers and duties given to the school superintendent by general law, except those powers and duties assigned by the charter to the town manager, and shall further have those powers and duties as may be assigned by the school committee." Which at the end is just getting a little worried, but to your point, in one instance, hiring it refers to five members of the full, and then firing it refers to a majority.
Yeah.
But it does mention the contract, uh, in there. Let me see where that line was. "And under such conditions of employment as provided for in a written contract." Do we read that line one more time? Or is that, does that cover it?
So I think we're still left with the question of which trumps which in this situation. You know, they're, they're conflicting, so which one, you know, prevails? And maybe we need an opinion on that before we.
Yeah, I don't want to give.
Right, I know.
But I would, I think that Marty should probably correct that it would be wise of us to just say, listen, that charter provision limits our ability to do what we want with hiring and firing. It's normally a majority. It says five to hire, which doesn't really make sense. Nobody has that restriction that I'm aware of in other places. So it probably makes sense to at least recommend that they change it, eliminate it really. They could say something like, "Committees' obligation to hire or fire in accordance with law," and follow the law, but.
So for the sake of time, what if we explain in our recommendation that the two issues are conflicting and that they should.
It could conflict.
We can leave them with the option of either eliminating the charter language or making them consistent? Does that sound?
Well, I would say either eliminate the charter language or just refer to the law.
Okay.
It's not consistent with the contract, because the contract, we can do something different each contract if we wanted to.
Okay, right. Okay. I think that we can move on from the discussion of the charter review, and I think what we'll do is, is submit from the school committee the ones that we all agreed on tonight. Okay. Um. Do you want, yeah. So just to.
Diane, do you have the, you have all the topics that we want to include?
From, yeah.
Okay.
The ones that we just discussed that we approved, and I took notes too, so she and I can.
I'd be proud between the two of us, I think we have them.
Okay.
We can take a vote if you, uh.
So I've got the ones that you just all said that you all want to.
Put together in one document, one letter. I have that. The others you're all gonna do separately on your own.
Yeah.
Do you want to review the ones that we had consensus on?
Well, why don't we just do, I'll do a motion that we authorized Diane to submit that on her behalf, the items we just discussed.
Second. All those in favor? Close. Okay, okay, let's cross that off. And I just want to get one more thing out of the way, and if we want to, you know, push the rest of this off, we can. Except for that Jess isn't here to speak to it, but, uh, we have a request from the select board chair, Tom Lucusa, that, uh, myself, possibly Russ, Marty, and Tom meet with, um, Mr. Lucusa and Pop Sterzik and Stephen Crane in joint administrative meetings. These have historically been done. At times we've discussed, you know, whether or not we want to continue, you know. And really, I think the hesitations that I've heard are that it sort of gives the chair more information necessary than the entire committee, or gives them more, um, not power per se, but just, you know, space time and discussing things. So I wanted to make sure that the committee, what, I wanted to find out what the committee wanted for us to do. Favor of us meeting in these joint admin meetings, I think maybe once every, how, how often were they last year?
During budget season, it was more frequent. Um, I'd say we were at least once a month, but maybe more frequently as we got closer to the budget decisions. So, no, I'd say no more than twice a month.
Well, I, I think just in the spirit of what we discussed about having the joint conversations and communicating, I don't see how it would hurt.
Beth? I do think it's a good idea. I, I wonder, would this be included, um, as if it were like a subcommittee and you would come back and report? Would you just include this report in your chairman's report at the beginning of the meeting and kind of fill us in? So, Beth?
I guess that's what they're adding. I'm just trying to think. Sometimes it feels choppy when it happens because a lot of information is disseminated to the chair and then, um, we still only get the information later on. I don't know if it's something that can be, and I don't know how they work, but if it's more productive to have it as part of like the finance committee? Or is it better to have just one person in there? Don't know, to incorporate it like into your meeting times, like have them come? Or whatever, I don't know. Because it does start to feel a little bit choppy, like you'll get all the information, but I don't know. The finance committee's the one that's, you guys are always, have everything in front of you.
Yeah, that's a thought.
So just, what is, like, what are the topics that you discuss during those meetings? Strictly like that.
Yeah, I think you're exchanging budget projections and budget assumptions and, you know, the budget picture shifts over the weeks and months. And so I think it's an opportunity to say, okay, where do things stand now? And what are your challenges, you know, do you have any opportunities budget-wise? And so it, it, I think it, it, I don't think there are decisions made there, but it helps narrow the, you know, the breadth of what needs to be decided. It, it kind of clears a lot of the noise away from the key budget discussions and decisions that are made here. Is that fair, Tom?
Yeah, I don't know that it was strictly financial, though I think there were some issues with the middle school that we talked about last year. I think the DPW project came up and there were some dialogue about the timeline and process for that project. So there were other items that were discussed.
They were mainly financially, they were related to the financials, though. Mainly.
Mainly.
By moving it to finance, is it just a matter of adding you? Are you two, are the only, is that it?
Last year, sometimes it was Jess and myself. Sometimes Jess just did it. I think the dilemma is then you have one or two people that just have more information than everybody else. If we did it through a finance sub, then we'd have probably a report out, it'd be a public meeting. I think you could still, based on what I saw at least, you could still discuss all those topics. And nobody comes to our finance subcommittee meetings anyway. But I didn't see really any reason why those things couldn't have been discussed in a meeting.
I think it would be helpful. I mean, I don't, it always, it still felt like at the end we're just, you know, presented with the information. If we had it, so it was finance sub, and then we had kind of reports along the way. I think it would feel less choppy, more smooth, and not hit with it at the end.
Yeah.
I think the benefit to that, that there were meetings, and so it is a public meeting. I think the benefit to that, that there would be minutes and so it is a public meeting and, um, you know, just... So, um...
Can we see what they think about it?
Yeah, I can pitch that to Tom and see where he goes and I can bring it back to you. Okay. All right. It is, I can't even see the clock, so it's 10:15. Do you guys want to keep going as much as we can until 10:30 or just table what we have left?
Can we do the conference real quick? That's like a two-second. Which one?
I think we have the, the conference request.
Oh, conference, I'm sorry, yes.
Just to get that off of my plate.
So, let's keep banging out what we can. I'm gonna, I'm gonna move around the superintendent plan.
Oh, I missed, I, I was at, I was at that point. Did I miss something?
We've done, so Stephanie's conference request. Stephanie, do you want to speak to this? We have a request from Stephanie.
Yes. So I attended, um, it was, I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to make it, but I was and I was really glad I did. And Marty and I attended the, um, national, um, conference that was entitled, "The Innovative Strategies to Prevent Educator Sexual Misconduct." It was a fabulous, um, it was conference. It was well worth it. And I talked with Marty and we're kind of working on, um, ways that we can look at our policy and make some changes, add some things and, um... So, I'm looking to, it wasn't a conference, um, that I was particularly looking to attend, but now that I have, I'm looking to have that one in place of the MASC and the one that I was going to attend in February in DC, although I may still attend that. But as far as my, like, annual conference, I'm looking to see if we can have the, um, school use this one for me.
And what was the cost?
So it was three, uh, the conference with the taxes or charges or whatever, it was a total of $316.20.
So you attended on your own and you're asking for reimbursement? Just so I don't, is not everyone coming up?
No, yeah. So I was intending on, um, yeah, so in place of MASC, I was going to do a conference on, um, my own. And so I was intending on going to one in February and this one came up and it was an area that I really, um, didn't have a lot of knowledge in and it's one that's not addressed, hasn't been addressed on, um, school committee level that I know of. So I really felt the urgency of attending this one and bringing it back to the committee. And, um, so that's kind of why it ended up being, um, swapped. But the intention was always that I was going to be attending a conference outside of MASC.
Yeah, I do remember that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't really, I don't have an issue with that, but I think what we need to do as a committee is figure out, one, I don't think we have a line item for any of this, actually. Including the conference. And, um, two, I think we need to figure out how much money do we want to spend every year and on what? And how do we do it? Because right now, it just seems that we kind of, I don't think we have any rules over any of this, actually, so we probably should. We should also probably figure out what we're budgeting for it and...
I think how, well... How I was thinking of it is that MASC is very expensive. It's like three hotel nights that I think are more than my one conference. So that's why I felt, you know, this. So I was just basing it on the MASC conference that people attend and that was it.
Oh, yeah, no, that's understandable. It's just that right now, we don't have any, oh, sorry.
No, just a long ra, in a, a long-range kind of plan on what we're going to do next year on conference.
Yeah, just, I, I think we should actually think about what we spend for the conference, for example, and should we do that or should only two people go in the future? This year was a little different because we have three new members out of seven. Not tonight, I'm just saying at some point.
So I agree with that. I'll put, if everyone's okay with that, I'll put that on the agenda at a future meeting. So, and, um, I like the concept of coming up with a procedure for it. Why don't we take a motion on her current, on Stephanie's current request for reimbursement?
I'd move to...
Reimburse.
Reimburse for $316.20.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Next, we have, uh, uh, the ethics disclosure from Dr. O'Shea. He sought an opinion from the Ethics Board regarding his ability to participate in negotiations. The opinion was provided in your packet. Attorney Valerio has also draft, oh, she has drafted the motions below. Why don't we start by getting motion on the table? Russ?
Um, so moved. Oh, you want me to read the action?
Sure, yeah, I think.
"School committee having reviewed the conflict of interest disclosure form filed with the school committee by Dr. O'Shea as required by MGL 268A, section 19, I move that the school committee vote to determine that the financial interest disclosed on the form is not so substantial as to affect the integrity of the services to the municipality and that the chair be delegated the authority to execute the form."
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Russ?
So, this came up, somebody in the community asked me about it, but basically the, the issue is that Superintendent O'Shea's wife works in unit A, so we have to follow this process. I think this first page is...
Uh, so there's two disclosures. One is sort of a, a general, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So I'm referring to the, this first page in our packet. It says, "Hi Liz," and then it has, it looks like an email. Is that the opinion that Liz gave you during the hiring process?
Yeah, that was, so she had recommended. So I had intended to do the disclosure relative to, um, participating in negotiations. So that's the section 19 disclosure. And then there's also this section 23 disclosure, which is more of a generic, general disclosure.
Has that already been done?
That has not been done.
Okay. So we need to do section 23. You'll do that separately.
Right, correct. The school committee doesn't need to, they only need to acknowledge receipt of the section 23 disclosure.
Yeah.
But the school committee would have to...
So you're going to file that with us and the clerk?
Correct, yeah.
And then section 19, the second part, so this is an email that you received early on...
Right.
In the process and basically you get a second opinion from the State Ethics Commission that says the same thing, essentially.
Yeah.
So, the reason we're here is to simply vote on the documents that are attached so that they can participate in negotiations, basically, notwithstanding the, the conflict issue.
That's kind of a synopsis. Yeah, sort of to affirm publicly that, you know, that I wouldn't use my position to secure any unwarranted privilege. And it's, so...
Any questions or discussion?
Can I ask, um, I just don't understand. Why does it say, "Hi Liz" at the top?
Uh, I might have exerted, there was some other extraneous information. I probably exerted other things.
So you took out some?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, give the committee the...
So this is just an email from her to...
It goes, yeah.
Her to you back then?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion to, um... Vote to determine that the financial interest disclosed on the form is not so substantial as to affect the integrity of the services to the municipality and that the chair be delegated the authority to execute the form. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. We have a second motion related? I need a motion that the school committee accept the filing of Dr. O'Shea's conflict of interest disclosure form as required by MGL C 268A, section 23B 3. I need a motion to say so.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I was just going to second.
I read it because he wasn't taking it.
I thought he was biting.
I know. I'm trying to, wake up, guys.
Almost there.
I know. Uh, second. Okay. All those in favor? Mr. Mazza is in a similar situation and the motions regarding his participation in negotiations are also below.
So, yeah, I just want to, similar situation means sister in unit A.
Correct.
To be. "The, the school committee having reviewed the conflict of interest disclosure form filed with the school committee by Mr. Mazza as required by MGL 268A, section 19, I move that the school committee vote to determine that the financial interest disclosed on the form is not so substantial as to affect the integrity of the services to the municipality and that the chair be delegated the authority to execute the form."
Second from someone?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. And one last motion.
I move that the school committee accept the filing of Mr. Mazza's conflict of interest disclosure form as required by MGL chapter 268A, section 23B 3.
Second. All those in, any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Okay. The only thing we have left on our agenda is Marty's, um, annual goal, annual plan. Um, I know we've all spent a lot of time talking to him and he's done some great changes and edits, made some great changes and edits to the document. Would anyone like to move to approve those tonight? I know Jess made some changes that are not integrated into this document yet. She's not here to speak to them, so we have two choices. We can move on this now, um, the way that it stands or we can table it and ask Marty and Jess to try to get this into a document for our approval. I just, I know that we should at some point really have these up there on the website and have them approved, so.
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable waiting. If she has edits on it.
It's unfortunate that it wasn't, it didn't put in the first round, but I think we need to give it fairness of looking through what, what she had to say or, or meeting with Marty. Did she meet with you or no?
We haven't met yet.
Okay.
Just, we've talked, but we haven't met.
See it through.
Okay, so we will table this to the next meeting and the goal will be to have them approved, for sure, by then. Okay, um, so that concludes all the rest of our business for tonight. I can take a motion to adjourn from someone?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay.
Someone just tell me what the decision was.
What?